This meeting is being recorded.
Waiting for a quorum.
Yeah.
We had like a 40 minute break, so get people.
Yeah, I needed to go somewhere else and so I took off a little early, but I was listening on my phone.
When looking for a quorum, you got to make sure somebody's not hiding in that participants place. I found you guys hiding. Now we have one, two, three, four of us. Tyler Bird has joined us. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'd like to call it order, the Waukesha County Council meeting for September 15th, 2020. Council staff, could you please call the roll?
Red Brown. Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Tyler Bird.
Here.
Todd Donovan.
Present.
Ben Ellenboss.
Here.
Carol Frazee.
Here.
Kathy Kerschner. Red Brown. Kathy Kerschner.
I expect we'll see them join us as we go along. So first thing up is the county executives report.
All right. Well, good evening, council, and welcome back from the summer break. And I just wanted to share with you that today is our 41st wedding anniversary. Forty-one years. Okay, so you know, I just wanted to give you a little report. I will be very brief on what many things have happened while there was a summer break. And and I will just not in any necessarily any order, but I just wanted to share a few things with you. The one is that Mayor Seth Fleetwood and myself had a listening series. It was actually co-sponsored by the Western Washington University President Randala and LIBC Chairman Solomon. And we had four different meetings and we have done some debriefing. And two major points have developed, of course, there are many, but two major points have come to the top, you know, during this for some policy considerations or changes at city, county level. The one is that there should be some kind of racial equity commission. We don't know what shape or form it would be. It could be a task force. It could be a commission. It could be something different. But the community would like, and I think I support that, that we should have some kind of racial equity commission which can look into our systemic places which we may not be able to see, but who can identify certain things that which we can discuss and and bring about into 21st century. The second thing is that some kind of civilian oversight of law enforcement and justice. Now, this has been discussed with, I have made aware, had some discussion with sheriffs and and county prosecutor. And our county prosecutor is on the state task force set up by governor on this very issue. And so there will be more things coming out about that and whatever shape or form. But I just wanted you to know as council that some of these things will be coming forward in in future meetings. The positive cases, as you heard from Erica, have spiked among 18 to 29 population. But among the Patriot Sound counties, Waukesha County is the best. As far as the numbers are concerned, we don't compare ourselves to San Juan or Island County. They're fairly small, but counties of our size, I think Waukesha County is is fairly the leader in keeping COVID cases in check and and taking all the other precautions. The CARES Act, you heard a little bit about that we are getting $4.5 million, which are strictly allocated towards the health emergency or health part of it. In addition to what we have initially allocated from our share, we allocated $5 million. And now we're getting $4.5 million more. And we are getting another similar four and a half million dollars for the rest of the county programs issues. The conditions have not changed. The litmus test or advisement from the treasury and from the Commerce Department has not changed. The only thing has changed is we got an extra month. If you remember, we talked about October 30th being the date. And now they moved it to November 30th and 15 days more because we have to give all the reports by December 15th so they can compile at the end of December. Now, I just want to share with you, I have shared this with the five counties, that we should push for this this date should be extended to June 30th, 2021. And we should be allowed 35%, up to 35% use, which may not be COVID related. There's nothing wrong with asking unless we push. Because I believe that this money will be better and more efficiently used if they give local jurisdictions some flexibility. Because our needs may be different from Skagit, even Washington needs may be different from Carolina or some other places. I think the federal government doesn't have to give us any new money. But if they can give us flexibility with this money, we can do much better, more efficient use of these CARES Act dollars. So we are trying to make that case. Some more money. We have gotten two community development block grants. The first one is micro enterprise grant was $250,000, which we decided in April to to make an application. Waukesha County has never applied for such a grant. And it goes to only micro enterprise and maximum money we can give is 15,000. And we have two years to distribute this money and you will hear more about it. So and we applied for another CDBG grant for $400,000, it's a little bit over $400,000, which we were successful. That was in addition to the CV1 grant, which we just had to make an application and get the money. If you remember when you left, we said we just have to make an application, we'll get it. And this is in addition to that, and it is directed towards housing issues. Now, today, yesterday, we found out that there is another CDBG grant, which is CDBG CV3 grant, which is also $450,000. And that is an allocation we will be getting in next few days. So but the one good thing about these grants is we are not tied to the date, immediate date of this year, so we will be able to use over next couple of years. They may be very specific purposes for that, but it still helps relieve some of our dollars from those. Now, Point Roberts, Port of Bellingham started the ferry. For one day, I personally took a trip to Point Roberts on the ferry and met with the local leaders there for whatever 15, 20 minutes, came back. It takes two hours to go, two hours to be back. And and they they totally love it. They totally appreciate that now they have some outlet where they don't have to go through borders. So the Port of Bellingham wanted to do it till end of this year. And we supported that. And now we are discussing with Port of Bellingham because they were using their budget to do do that. They don't have CARES Act money. So we may be able to use CARES Act money for this because now we're getting additional allocation. So we thought that the best use is that we we pay for the ferry expenses. Social marketing project, I think that you heard from Erica, you will hear more about that. This is not a social media. Now, a lot of people confuse that, the social media, this has been done for, you know, HIV. This has done for many different purposes. I sent you guys an email with a lot of data, as well as a lot of studies from the past where social marketing has been done very successfully to the to the young audience. And please read it over. Have questions, we'll be happy to answer and you will hear more about that. And and I did include the budget in there. We are working with Western Washington University and Professor Dave Bennett to spearhead, or he is a known expert in this area, has done many of them. He did a survey, which I sent to you during summer to to put it on your Facebook pages and all this. By the way, that really helps us to get the message out when all the council members put it out there and then share with their friends and they've shared with their friends. I think it's a good way to reach our our communities. So last I heard was 10 days ago, he had $4,500, $4,500 responses. So we we think that if we can get to 10,000 responses, that really shows us communities' interest and guidelines. So you will you will hear more about that. And I would like Deputy Executive Tyler Schroder to walk through the budget, our current budget status, where we are, our expenses, which I think the council wanted to know on our revenue, sales tax, property tax, and other things where we are with our budget. So Tyler, please take it away.
Great. Thanks, Executive Sadhu. Tyler Schroder, Deputy Executive. On the September 29th meeting, we will be coming forward with the second quarter report and be able to have more information on the council agenda. But I would like to give an update on the biennial budget and kind of where we're at year to date, as well as where we're moving forward for the development of the budget. At the end of the second quarter 2020, we've seen general fund revenues down $1 million from second quarter in 2019. We've actually seen second quarter expenditures up $3 million from second quarter of 2019. But a lot of that is in relation to the Health Department expenditures on the on the pandemic fight. And thankfully, we can utilize CARES Act dollars to cover about $3.2 million a year to date for those general fund expenses. As I indicated, overall revenues are going to be generally projected to be flat or down through at least 2021. That's not a surprise to anyone. Sales tax at the end of 2020 is projected to be down at this point 7% from 2019, or approximately $1.1 million. It's really quite a roller coaster year as it relates to sales tax. Year to date, we've seen 4% reduction and which doesn't really add up unless you take a look at some of the collections from January and February. So in February of this year, we saw our sales tax collection up 12%. When we got to May, there was a reduction of 22.2%, which was, you know, square in the stay home orders and the economy was shut down at that point. June, another reduction of 17.8%. And then it started to flatten off as it relates to July and August collections. And those were down respectively 7.6% and then in August, 6.1% now. So as you add all of that up, we'll see about a 7% or a 4% reduction year to date. What we are projecting moving forward is something similar to the July and August collection. So we're looking at probably a 7% reduction through the end of the year and then also into the budget projections for 2021. Property tax collection, we had first thought there'd be about a 3% reduction, or approximately $900,000. Through the first core or through through the first collection, it's down 1.7% or approximately $276,000. As you guys all know, because you probably haven't paid them to date, the second half collections are still outstanding. We are hopeful that those collections will come in as projected. I think overall, the finance team senses that they will likely be, you know, about on par or maybe a little bit less than last year. But with the federal stimulus, the PPP, as well as some of the other unemployment checks that we have been seeing, we are anticipating property tax to be collected at a fairly consistent rate this year, but are starting to worry about what that may look like next year. As it relates to the budget information, all of the departments have submitted their additional service requests or their budget packets into the administration. We've been working with a number of the different departments to fine tune their budget details. As recognized, most of the budgets are status quo with very little additional increases to budgets based off of last year. And all of the departments have prepared their budget reduction plans as kind of asked by council and recognized by the administration. We'll continue to work with them through the next couple of weeks and we'll have much more detail by the September 29th meeting. But after the first analysis of the revenue projections, as we look into 2021, as well as some of the increases that have to be accomplished, like technology contracts and others, we're seeing a preliminary shortfall of $1 million plus for 2021 that we still have to try to accomplish for a budget, a balanced budget moving forward. So we're continuing to look at the revenues. We're continuing to talk about additional austerity measures similar to what we've put in place in 2020 to cover what we anticipate to be about a 7% reduction in the proposed budget moving forward. Now, 7% is less than what I think some of us were talking about or projecting back in May and June. And we're hopeful that that's how it will come into place. So in the 29th meeting of September, we'll be able to bring forward the second quarter report, give a little bit more actual data behind whatever reported today and look forward to start engaging council on on the budget preparation as we kind of move forward and 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 take the steps into November for council consideration of the budget.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Schroder. Seven, is that 7% for 2021, 22? You have to split that between the years. And the second is, how much will we, how much will, are we forecasting to draw down on reserves?
Yes, both very good questions that we're still working out. I can say that we are getting more certain about our 2021 projections, which is that 7% reduction. A 2022 projection seem very far out and seem to have to really have a better understanding of local economy and world economy. And we will need to have some discussions about those 2022 projections. At this point, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Brown.
I was just gonna say, I'm disappointed because I expect a month by month accurate forecast.
I usually hold up this, this is my crystal ball, when people ask for 2022 projections. But I have not quite yet understood what that is going to be.
So a more realistic question though is, what what assumption are you building the 2022 budget around?
You know, I indicated about a million dollar shortfall for 2021. We are looking at maybe a $3 million shortfall in 2022 as it relates to just core revenues to expenditures. And then your other question, Councilmember Brown, was how does that look into fund balances? And we'll have that information by the 29th, but I don't have it to kind of accurately describe as of right now.
But in broad terms, it sounds like combine the two numbers together, we'd be drawing down 4 million bucks off the general fund. Is that about right?
That is correct, as as our projections look to.
All right, so it's still a reasonable buffer.
Yes.
Yep.
Mr. Donovan.
I'm sure we'll get into this more on the 29th, but so the the projection for sales was seven. I thought I heard a four or seven, but I think you said seven. And property tax, down 7%, property tax down 1.7%. But property taxes, a much bigger portion of the budget. So how? Are we, at first, are we just talking general fund? Because there's some funds that are very sales tax dependent. But the general fund budget is is less sales tax, kind of says when how the 7% reduction sales tax goes it to a net 7%. If property taxes are coming in at just 2% down, and you can tell me, we'll talk about that on the 29th.
Yeah, it would be best to talk about that on the 29th, but I did kind of lay out a couple of different numbers. Sales tax year to date collection was down 4%. We're projecting that through the end of the year to be down 7%.
7%.
Yeah, because we're anticipating what we see as kind of a new normal of sales tax collection being that July and August. And and that if you run that all the way out to the end of the year, it'll get to the 7%. Property tax, we're we're only actually projecting to be down 1% less than 2019 or 2021.
Right, and that's, we get twice more revenue from property tax than sales tax. So that's why I'm wondering how we get to the seven. But I'll just telegraph that out for a discussion on the 29th.
Make sure to double check those numbers and kind of and.
Oh, no, I trust your numbers. I think there's a lot of different funds that we need to be talking about that are going to be going in different directions.
Yeah, and a lot of our focus at this point, well, a lot of our discussion with council is based on the general fund. And you are correct, Councilmember Donovan. The other funds as it relates to the road fund, the behavioral health fund, we're doing the same analysis. It's just that when we really look at moving forward, the general fund is such a large portion of our overall budget.
Mr. Bird, did I see your hand earlier?
Thank you. Tyler, I'm looking for, we were getting updates on monthly basis as it relates to income and expenses. I haven't seen one since June. Have there been additional updates sent out for those for July and August?
No, I think the last one was early in August that we sent out. And I was finalizing that yesterday to get it to council and Brad Bennett, the finance manager, and I are working on it, finding tuning it, and you should see it by the end of this week.
So there's already one for July?
I believe so. Let me, I would have to double check Councilmember Bird the last time I sent it to council. But I thought we sent it August 1st for July, but maybe not. I will have to double check.
And then I know in August, we had a meeting, and I pulled it up then, but June was was the most recent one I had. So for the August update, would that have been the July revenue? I would assume and September's would be August.
Yes, and I think you're actually accurate. I, knowing that we didn't have a county council meeting in August, I think the the last one probably was the June one that you that you're referring to.
How soon? Sorry about these guys. How soon can we get the updated numbers for for those two months?
I was hoping to get it to you guys today, so by the end of the week, we'll we'll get it to council.
Okay, can you send us what you were just referring to as well, what we're reading from?
Yep, I'll be able to provide you that updated general fund analysis as well as kind of these bullet points for consideration. And then we will be finalizing the quarterly quarterly report and we can walk through that in more detail on the 29th.
Councilmember Brown.
So my my crystal ball is probably not as good as yours. But if we've got 4% down for the first half of the year and you're forecasting 7% for the whole year, I assume you're saying the second half of the year, you're forecasting down by 10%.
Yep.
Right, so the question is, what are we forecasting for next year? Being down 7% or being down 10% or being down worse, depending on which way you do the trend line?
We are talking about 7% right because we are hoping the economy is not gonna sit like this as long as we move to phase three and phase four. Economy gonna improve. I mean, this is everybody's guess. We could, we could be very pessimistic and make it 15%. And and we could be very optimistic and just call it maybe 6% or 7%. So we are looking at what other counties, what state, and like there are economists who are advising the governments and other counties, like King County, the amount of staff and resources they have. Their 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 economy may be a little bit different than us, but we always grow with those larger counties, like Sonoma County is not very far from us. And and Canadian border can open up and that can relieve some of those things. So the factors are very variables or varying. And, you know, so we are trying to be conservative on this, but at the same time, do don't want to hurt ourselves just to look very conservative. So that's where we are.
So if I understand you correctly, the forecast for next year is we're down 7%. Correct. Which would would assume.
That that's correct, in total through the general fund. And so as as Councilmember Donovan was talking a little bit, there's a couple of different revenue sources that go into that, not just the sales tax.
So my challenge with that assumption, and I don't have any better view of the future than you do. I mean, but my challenge is that to for that to be 7%. You'd assume with the second half of this year is 10%. You'd have to assume the, you know, it'd be safe to assume the first half of next year is 10%, which means you have to assume that the second half of next year is 4% to get you back to the 7% blended rate. I mean, you know, it's still throwing mud against the wall, but.
But you you are right. I mean, the, we think that in next 12 months or six to eight months from today, that's exactly nine months for the second, third quarter in 2021, right? And nine months, we believe that things should improve. And this election hoopla will be over. We may get stimulus money, but we're not depending on that. We're not counting on on stimulus package or anything. And and the other part is that if we do get something like this, we can always revisit with the budget and like we do quarterly reports. And we can look at June 30th and do a budget revision if it requires that or or whatever. So we, everything is pretty open right now for us to pin down. This is exactly what it is. And this is a dynamic situation. And and we will just look for the council to for guidance as we go along.
And I just say this, Australia, which is the nearest equivalent country to Canada, they've shut all the, they shut all tourism down till the middle of next year. I would, I would expect Canada to ultimately do the same. And then the Canadians have to then change their mind and feel safe coming down. So I don't know.
Nobody wants to go to Australia.
Councilmember Bird.
I don't think there's any question, I follow, Councilmember Brown and I are on the same track with a lot of this stuff. But the, I mean, those are the unknowns. I mean, the other unknowns or what other things are going to happen to us at this point? I mean, how many things have happened this year on top of COVID that we would have never expected? Including less recently, the forest fire issues that we're seeing right now. What happens if that comes to the county and the damage to homes and property here and to the economy? Or who knows, any number of random things that appear to continue to pile on one after another. So my preference is to be leaner and and have more funds available and be on the safe side and then be scrambling constantly, trying to figure out how to get there as well. I'm wondering, well, in in addition to that, is the budget including what will happen if we have to then take on those COVID related expenses? Because things like the CARES dollars don't continue after the end of the year. So. So what's the burn rate that we're putting into that, and how is that being factored into next year? Uh, based on information that we've received from our own health department that will continue to be in phases until we have a vaccine and the most recent vaccine information coming out affecting the market here recently, that the vaccines that we thought were were promising are are not as promising as we were hopeful for, and and that it's looking like it's going to be a much longer period of time than than the year and a half that was being initially communicated, so and as far as I'm aware, the governor still hasn't changed his position on letting us out of phase two and moving to phase three, even though we we meet those requirements, correct? There is one other thing that I I I'm concerned about. And that is that we're seeing an enormous influx of people coming here and buying homes from other areas that they don't feel safe in and and that they no longer want to live for one reason or another, and it appears to be significantly driving home prices. I'm worried that that influx of people is going to push us way outside of of the growth population figures that we had already calculated for them, that we were already outside of. How are we going to address that increased need for housing over and above the the current deficit that we have? How do we, how do we support additional people moving here when we already have a point five percent, point four percent vacancy rate in very few homes on the market, so? I heard an example yesterday where a single white trailer sold for five hundred fifty thousand dollars, I think it was, for I mean, that's that that's incredible, right? So what are we going to do for our community and the people that live here now that that still need housing and can't find it or can't afford it? And how are we factoring that in?
You know, uh, may maybe if I may comment on that, I think that I would suggest the council should take this as a challenge and do something about it. Because the any change in that we have been talking about for almost two years, but this is not something to just talk about. We all know this. And I would say the council should say within next three to six months, they will take a positive actions to increase housing in our county. That's something you guys have to take up and and act on it. Just talking about it and feeling good about that you showed your concerns, it's not good enough.
I I I'm offended by that based on the several months I took trying to get us to that point of of having measurable impacts on that specific issue within a specific period of time, so the fact that it's being brought back now and and I mean, they'll what feels like, hey, don't just give lip service, but try to take this action of of making something happen within a period of time is.
Mr. Bird, that's exactly what I'm saying, just coming and talking in every meeting, saying we have housing problem, we have housing problem. I would like to see council says that these are the three or four steps we need to take. And those steps are already known. It's nothing unknown that somebody has to come from outside and tell you. I I I really would like to say in in a challenging way, the council should say within six months, they will take some action. I haven't seen it in the last six months. Any action taken on this, of course, we had COVID, we had everything, but nobody talks about what to do. They talk about what the problem is, we already know the problem. What is the solution? And it it should come in concrete, in writing, we write resolutions on the fly. We write resolutions on the fly within the council meeting. And 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 we edit that, nobody has brought any any resolution to the council to look at our policies and what need to be changed.
Or Brown.
Back to the question about forecasts. You know, again, there is no crystal ball, but what I'd like to suggest is is we we're building a model based on assumptions and about sales tax revenues and all the rest of it, and it'd just be good if we could have the model published somewhere so that we could all monitor it and say, let's say there's ten things that are affecting the assumption about what the revenue rate is going to be. We just identify those ten things, and then as things change, we can look at the model as opposed to having to keep coming back to you guys and saying, well, is it is it going to change now? Is it going to change now? I mean, if it's a simple model, we can sort of do that assumptions or do that calculations themselves.
Councilmember Ellen Boss.
Mr. Executive, sir. Stop, Paul.
Oh, yes, I'm here.
How long were you on the council?
Forty years, five years.
Five years. All the stuff that you thought was a good idea and that you brought forward to fix our housing issues, go ahead and send them to me and I'll I'll work on getting them documented.
Very good, I will do that, I will do that, that what are the three or four things I brought up? And action didn't happen, I will make a note and I'll send it to you by before end of this week.
Perfect. I've got some ideas on my own, but in the moment, we've been busy with uh, trying to manage the emergency declaration that that we've got, which seems to me to be very much handled. And so maybe it would free us up a little bit if we could um, start rolling back Unified Command and start rolling back all some of these other programs that have that have done a good job and 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 free us up to focus on on some of these issues that that we keep talking about and not taking any action on, apparently.
Any more comments or questions on the executive's report? Okay, we'll move on, uh, next item up is we have five cents of minutes to approve, uh, do I have a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Donovan moves, Brown seconds, any discussion? Changes, additions, deletions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Brad Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yep.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Uh, next up is public hearings, uh, we have one public hearing, it's AB twenty twenty dash oh eighty six. It's an ordinance granting Selco partnership doing businesses Verizon Wireless, a non-exclusive franchise for the provision of wireless telecommunications services. Do we have any staff report on this? Is there anyone signed up to speak?
We have one person with a hand raised. Valerie Rupp Howard.
Hello, Valerie, are you there?
Um, just a second, actually, I need to promote her, she's using an old version of Zoom. Valerie, we won't be using a camera, but you're welcome to speak.
Go ahead, Valerie.
Hello. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, um, so I am from Long Island, and I don't know if any of you are familiar with our dry dock situation that we're going through at this current time. Um, we have a passenger only ferry and then a van for people who have to leave their cars on the other side of the ferry. Social distancing on the ferry and on the van are extremely difficult right now. Um, and it uh, it seems like the precautions they took um, were as much as they could do with the little amount of the time that they've had, and they posted fines about um, having people only use the transportation for essential purposes, basically, and um, there are a lot of people who are using vacation rentals by owner out here. Um, and it's that they should just take the ferry and the van and that'll be okay. Um, I was riding the van and there was somebody who took their mask off, the driver didn't see. Um, and I'm I'm concerned for my community safety.
Valerie, Valerie. Um, this public hearing is uh, is about a specific issue on the on a Selco partnership uh, exclusive franchise. Um, I think you probably meant to speak at the open session, which is next.
Um, yeah, sorry about that, uh, what time is that before I can?
It'll it'll be coming up just in in literally a couple of minutes.
Okay, okay, yeah, of course, okay.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, no.
Okay, Kathy, is there anyone else raising their hand?
There are no other attendees with their hands raised.
Okay, um, can you enable our video?
Yes, just a second, my apologies.
Okay, there we go, thank you. Um, okay, we'll close the public hearing on this item and turn it back to council, what's the wishes of the council?
Barry, can uh, Kathy enable my video too? It looks like she likes my video.
There you are.
Thanks.
Okay, so what are the wishes of the council, Councilmember Bird?
Hey, I'll move approval, but in addition to that, I'd like to, Valerie, a quick suggestion, at least on my side, when you were trying to speak, it was very garbled, it might be helpful if you try to call in via phone. That might give a better connection and make it easier for us to hear what you're saying as a suggestion for open session next.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Is that a second from you? Councilmember Donovan seconds?
I have a question.
Discussion, Mr. Donovan.
Yeah, so the memo goes back to February, I'm assuming, because we we had this at our previous meeting one before that with different franchises. Up on Galbraith or whatever. This was, I'm assuming, just delayed because of COVID stuff. This is not one we were looking for more information on, because the materials are kind of dated. That's my question, it's like, is it just because of the COVID stuff that this is kind of dated?
Councilmember Member Donovan, this is Chris Quinn, um, Lockton County Prosecutor's Office, the answer to your question is yes, it was delayed as a result of the COVID stuff and getting it before you, uh, the members.
Thanks.
Other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yeah.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. So Valerie, we'll try to bring you back in, we'll let you go first, um, go ahead.
Hi there, um, I apologize for kind of jumping the gun there, um. So and I I know you might not be able to hear me, my phone, I can't call right now, um.
It's much better.
Okay, good, good. Um, so as I was saying about the dry dock situation, um, there are a bunch of people who are using the ferry and the van for non-essential purposes, and their business is advertising the use of the ferry and the van and not picking people up at the ferry, and I think that it's putting our community at risk of COVID nineteen. Um, of, and I I'm, I don't know if there's any way to get them to just stop bringing tourists over for vacation rentals for just the three weeks of dry dock, but I think that it would do a lot to keep our community safe. Um, yeah. And I don't know what to do, I I called all of you and left messages and I spoke to a Councilmember Kirschner, I believe, um, a a day or two ago about this, so. Yeah, um, anyway, I guess that was all I had to say, I'm hoping maybe you guys have some ideas on what we can do to keep the community safe in this time. Um, yeah. Sorry, this is very, very awkward for me, because I've never done a Zoom meeting before, so.
Well, you did just fine, Valerie, uh, do you have anything else? You still have some time?
Um, I I guess that's that's really just what it is, I mean, the not, there are also problems with housing and the vacation rentals um, in general, and I think that this is a county thing, I know that Bellingham has put some laws on the books surrounding vacation rentals in general, and I've um, I've heard a lot from people in my community about concerns particularly due to COVID with vacation rentals, bringing people um, who may be transmitting the devive and also, you know, not knowing um, how safe they can actually keep them if they're booking back to back. Um, and not having several days in between, as I know that some of the vacation rentals have been doing. Um, and I guess that's kind of all I really have to say on that, I do. Yeah, I guess that's that's what I have to say on that.
Okay, well, thanks for being, uh, thanks for being with us this evening, Valerie. Um, Kathy, is there anyone else with their hand raised?
Yes, the next speaker will be Andrew Gamble, followed by Adam Lamb, uh, Trevor Smith and Miguel Perry, and I'll start with Andrew Gamble. Andrew Gamble, are you there?
Good evening, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hello. Good evening.
Go ahead, please.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, please state your name for the record.
See, my time is running, so I assume you can hear me. Um, I'd like to, my name is Andrew Gamble, I'd like to speak about the Cherry Point Amendments. On behalf of Petrogas, I want to commend and thank the Planning Commission for their thorough review of the proposed amendments to the Lockton County Comprehensive Plan and County Code. It's a critical process with long-term impacts. We appreciate the chance to engage with other industry participants and resources in creating a final draft. And we feel it was a good faith effort by all parties involved. In particular, we wish to commend Mark Personius and Matt Amott from the Planning and Development Services Staff for providing insight and continuity to the code language. Also, we want to recognize Eddie Yuri of Resources who facilitated a collaborative effort between industry and NGO groups to find workable compromise at the direction of the Planning Commission. Uh, again, as we stated on August thirteenth in our address to the Planning Commission, uh, while the final version of these revisions may not reflect all of our preferred changes to the amendments, we think the current version represents substantial compromises and is a better, uh, more workable version than was originally proposed that we can all live with. Um, again, we urge you to adopt the Planning Commission recommended code languages, uh, these changes as presented by the Planning Commission. Uh, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Andrew.
The next speaker is Adam Lamb, followed by Trevor Smith and Miguel Perry, Adam?
Hi. My name is Adam Lamb. I am the president of Labor's Local Two ninety-two, and I'm here representing my fourteen hundred members. It's good to kind of see you guys all again virtually. Um, for the last year, the Planning Commission has been reviewing. Um, for the last year, the Planning Commission has been reviewing your proposed changes for Cherry Point. The Commission, through its work sessions, came up with good recommendations, including the joint proposal from Industrial and Resources. Please incorporate these recommendations, and I encourage you to continue the Planning Commission's transparent and collaborative communication with stakeholders. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Trevor Smith, followed by Miguel Perry. Go ahead, Trevor.
Good evening, council. My name is Tre- is Trevor Smith. I'm the Political Director for Labor's Local 292. And I represent, uh, 1,400 working families. Um, it's good to see you all again. Uh, tonight, I'm commenting on the Planning Commission update to the Cherry Point Comp Plan Amendments that have been sent to the council. Uh, which was discussed earlier in the Committee of the Whole. Uh, for the last year, the Planning Commission has been reviewing the council's proposed changes for Cherry Point. Uh, the Commission, through its work sessions, came up with good recommendations, including the joint proposal from Industry and Resources. Um, as someone who participated in these meetings, I can assure you that it was a hard fought process with compromises on both sides. But it's a process that I was happy to be a part of and to see work its way through, um, because it had input from all of the stakeholders. Um, I would encourage the council to please incorporate these recommendations, and I encourage you to continue the Planning Commission's transparent and collaborative communication with stakeholders. Thank you very much for your time.
The last speaker is Miguel Perry.
Good evening, council. How are you guys doing? Uh, I'm going to thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak to you. It's always a privilege to do so. I am Miguel Perry, Lead Representative, the Pacific Northwest Regional Council of Carpenters, representing over 2,000 workers, many of whom work at Cherry Point. I appreciate and was impressed by the efforts of the Planning Commission in its review of your proposed Cherry Point Amendments. The Commission's open and inclusive process resulted in some important recommendations. I also appreciated that the Commission encouraged industry and the environmental community to submit a joint proposal on some of the issues in dispute and included that proposal in its final recommendations to the council. I urge you to please accept the recommendations the Planning Commission made to your proposed Cherry Point Amendments. I also encourage the council to follow the Planning Commission's example and to work with stakeholders in an inclusive manner. Again, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you.
Councilmember Buchanan, we have one other hand raised. Um, the name listed is 191 Barney Smith. Could you please go ahead and state your name for the record?
Yes, uh, my name is Barney Smith with IBW Local 191. Um, I represent about 2,000 licensed electricians, which at any given time, uh, there could be anywhere from 100 to 200 working at Cherry Point. And that includes if, you know, they're, they, they all have families. Um, first, I want to say thank you to the Planning Commission for facilitating a process, which hopefully will be modeled with, uh, stakeholders that resulted in, uh, constructive recommendations to, uh, your proposed Cherry Point Amendments. Had included, which is very important to me, a compromise. Uh, it was a joint proposal by industry and our resource, resources. And I just asked the council if you could, uh, adopt the Planning Commission's, uh, recommendations and, uh, continue the Commission's, you know, open and inclusive process with stakeholders as the council enters the final phase of deliberation on the proposed amendments. And I just really want to stress that I, I really do think this should be a model on how we do things. Uh, it's super important that we all get in the same room and, and talk, because this is what we're about, compromise. And, uh, I just hope that this can move forward in a positive manner. Thank you. Have a good evening.
There are no, no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, thanks, Kathy. Okay, I will close the open public session, and we will move to the consent agenda. Councilmember Bird?
Yep, alright, um, give me one second here. So, we're going to do this in a couple of pieces, everyone. So, the, uh, item AB2, well, item number one, AB2020-335. Item number two, AB2020-336. Item number three, AB2020-337. Item number four, AB2020-338. Item number five, AB2020-339. Item number six, AB2020-342. Item number seven, AB2020-343. Item number eight, AB2020-349. Item number 10, AB2020-378. Item number 11, AB2020-341. And item number 12, AB2020-346. Item number 13, AB2020-353. And item number 14, AB2020-356, passed in committee. And I still move for approval.
Mr. Bird, I have a note on my script that says I item number 14 is being held. Moved, I should say, probably. Yes, it says, uh, moved from consent agenda to other items as number six. I think that is, uh, what Councilmember Kirschner was talking about this morning when we were talking about we needed to have us acting as the flood control board of supervisors. So I think that's why it got moved out of there.
No, uh, that was item number nine that I, I skipped over.
Dana, help me out. I got a note here that's bigger than.
That's Dana Brown Davis, Clerk of the Council. The, the one that Tyler has already left off the consent agenda is the one that's going to be held in committee for two weeks. There were two items for flood control zone district board of supervisors. The other one was not held in committee. They never even got to it. So the count, I don't believe, or maybe they did at the very end. Council can go ahead and adopt that one, just not under the consent agenda.
Yes, I have it, I have it actually moved to item number six in other items.
Correct.
Yeah, so are you saying that, that's a AB2020-356?
Correct, yes. If you can just leave that one off, Tyler, and we'll deal with that later.
You want me to reread those, or we just exclude?
Just exclude that number.
Everything I said minus number 14, AB2020-356.
That sounds good. We do have a motion and it's, uh, on the table, discussion. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss? Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. Didn't quite hear you, Ben. Did you vote? Did you say no?
Correct, I said no.
That's what I thought. Okay, that passes six to one with Councilmember Ellenboss opposed. Okay, next, Councilmember Bird?
Okay, uh, item number nine, AB2020-357. Request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract between Lockton County and Washington State Department of Ecology, 2020 through 2021, Washington Conservation Corp. Crew Agreement was held in committee and will be discussed again in two weeks, for the record. Item, I'm going to jump to the next couple. So, item number 16, AB2020-364. Request authorization for the county executive to enter into a five-year lease agreement using the National Association of State Prepariment Officials Value Point Master Agreement. And State of Washington Participating Addendum, number 05515 between Lockton County and Pitney Bowes for a replacement. Pitney Bowes Connect Plus Send Pro Mail Machine in the amount of $50,500, or $50,887.25 was forwarded to the council as a whole. Um, I move this item for approval. One second. Thank you, Todd.
We have a motion with Mr. Bird and Mr. Donovan seconds, discussion. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss? Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
That passes six to one.
Number 17, AB2020-365. Request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract between Lockton County and Lockton Family YMCA for operational losses incurred at their childcare facilities as a result of COVID-19 impacts in the amount of $292,221. This item was forwarded to the council as a whole. I move for approval.
I'll second. Oh, Carol got it.
Bird moves, Frazee seconds by a microsecond. Discussion.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to actually pull up the discussion point on this real quick. Out of curiosity, I know this is a consent item, but it seems like it's out of order. We're going to approve this item before we approve under the other items for finance. The, uh, the motion to actually approve the whole budget. Don't we need to go the other way?
Someone from the administration speak to that.
Uh, Tyler, as sure as deputy executive, I'd be fine if council wants to wait on these two until we take the other items and, and talk about the the motion of to approve the childcare grants. Either way, the council would like to handle it. I think you could do it either way.
Your finance chair, what would you like to do, Tyler?
Let's hold on to that just for, we'll come back to it. So I'm going to jump to number 19 then. It will come back to 17 and 18. So, uh, number 19 is AB2020-361. Request authorization for the county executive to award bid number 20-48 and enter into a contract between Lockton County and Hanifin Construction LLC for the Leeward Way Drainage Improvement Project CRP 920015 in the amount of $229,270. This was forwarded to the council as a whole. I will move for approval.
It, it's item 18 or 19?
19, thank you.
I'm on the legislature and I got 18, but it's 202361?
2023361.
Okay. That's what I'm looking at. I just had the number, but I do second.
Discussion on the motion. Okay, please call a roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Donovan, and then Mr. Brown.
So I'm on the legislature saying not the hard copy. So that was my item 18. Um, trying to figure out, maybe this is a question for Kathy or Dana.
Dana Brown Davis. The, if you're looking at the council's agenda, it got renumbered when we added, we removed an item from consent and put it, yeah, sorry.
Okay, I get it now.
Okay.
Okay, we got a whole bunch of extra things and I'm going to set up even more here in a second. The, uh, or confuse it even more. So, yeah. Item number one, under other items, is AB2020-316.
Yeah, I, Mr. Brown, I had did, I did just call on you.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to look at item 15, AB202359.
Oh, um.
We did that.
Yeah, thank you for that. The, right, the, okay, going back. The consent, AB, or item number 15, AB2020-359. Request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract amendment between Lockton County and Tetra Tech, Inc. To the men Lockton County Contract 2019-06008-2 in the amount of $23,268 for a total amended contract amount of $61,553. That was also forwarded to the council as a whole. I will move for approval.
Hey, we have, uh, we have a motion and a second, discussion. Mr. Ellenboss?
When you read, when you read the supporting documents here, they, they all seem to be for the same project. Is there a reason they don't get grouped together a little closer than, than what they do? Okay, moving on.
Craig, Craig's here.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know how they order them. We, we submit them and they get, they get put in an order and I, I was hoping you guys didn't overlook that amendment because that's required to, uh, do the project. So, uh, I think that's just the way they get in, sorted into the, um, program. Uh, I don't know that, we don't necessarily number them. Know if that helps.
Uh, it just kind of, it makes them look like two separate projects when it's all together.
There's two things. There's the award packet that you award the contract. And then there's this amendment to a consultant contract. So they are separate in the sense they're two different contracts, but they're for the same project.
Same project, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Other discussion? Okay, please call a roll.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Alright, thank you. Rod, thanks for catching that too. Appreciate it. Alright, next item, other un, item other, under other items. Item number one, AB2020-316, ordinance amending the 2020 Lockton County Budget, request number 16 in the amount of $987,509. That passed in committee two, one, and I will move for approval.
Okay, we have that motion, discussion.
Sorry, you don't need a second, right?
Mr. Bird?
Yeah, uh, for anyone not watching Finance Committee, the, I was the one no vote on this item. The reason I'm, I'm voting no on it in committee and, and again now is I'm not opposed to the funding, but I feel like we've spent so much information, or so much money up to this point in time. And that money has been moved around and, and re-bucketted several times that there's a lot of question about the total amount of money that we're spending and where it's going and how that's impacting things and what the results are and who those recipients are. And so, I don't feel comfortable just approving addition. And so I don't feel comfortable just approving additional funding. And continuing to approve additional funding every single time without having a thorough understanding of. Of how all these funds are working together and who's getting everything. And so I've asked for essentially a diagram or a chart that will break down the funding sources along with all of the money. That we brought in along with the timelines and the constraints for spending those funds. Who's getting those funds and the outcomes that we are looking for for those funds before we approve additional funds. So for the record, that is why I voted no on that item. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ellenboss?
As always, I don't like to take one vote for four different items that come from four different funds. For four different things.
Other discussion? Okay, please call a roll.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
That passes five to two.
I'll add one more thing to that and I apologize for not doing it before, but. You can't remove one item and still vote on it. And so I want to vote against something, I had to vote against everything included in that, I think that's exactly what Ben was referring to as well, so. Just for the record, but the next item is going to be number two, AB 2020-374. It's a report and request for a motion. Of support from the Waukesha County Council and acknowledgement and support of distributing these CARES Act dollars to very valuable childcare businesses. To, I'm probably two are very valuable childcare businesses. As recommended by the countywide childcare review team comprised of representatives from Waukesha County, City of Bellingham. Opportunity Council, Health Department, United Way, and Mount Baker Finance or Foundation. This item, the committee voted to approve all of these businesses and move forward with a three zero vote. And I can move.
Okay, we have a motion. Does there any discussion? Councilmember Frazee?
Yes, I'm going to repeat what I did at, what I said at this morning's meeting. That I'm thankful for all the money that's going to childcare for our community. And my one concern is on page twenty one of our packet. There is fifteen thousand dollars allocated to the FERS. And the reason for my concern is that the FERS. Does do discriminatory hiring, especially to the LGBT community, they. Fired someone in June twenty nineteen. And also when, when. The funds are allocated, I know Karen will chime in here. When the funds are allocated to these childcare facilities, they have to sign a document. To say non discrimination. And so if they sign this, they've already shown that they do discriminate against LGBTQ community. And here's what the non discrimination document says, it says the recipient. Shall, shall conduct its business and use funds in a manner which assures fair, equal, and non discriminatory treatment of all persons. Including maintaining open hiring and employment practices. And the compliance with all requirements of acceptable federal, state, or local laws. Or regulations related to hiring and employment practices and providing services to all persons without discrimination. As to any person's race, color, religion, sex, sexual orientation, disabled veteran condition, physical or mental handicap. Or national origin. And with that. I'd like to make a motion to allocate funds to all of the, all of the childcare funds or. All of the childcare facilities listed with the exception of the FERS.
Second. Um, Dana, do we already have a motion on the floor for the?
Yes.
Okay, so that would need to be a motion to amend, Carol? So if you just kind of rephrase that a little bit?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend. To allocate all the funds to the childcare facilities that are listed except for the FERS.
Second. Okay, discussion, Councilmember Ellenboss, I'm going to let Karen go first, go ahead Karen.
I just wanted to say, I don't want to say anything on the record, but I wanted to make sure you were all aware that I sent an email earlier. To Carol that pertains to this topic that you might want to look at before you make a decision.
Okay, Councilmember Ellenboss?
I'll start off by saying that I do support the LGBTQ community and. I don't think that the first should have. Let that individual go. But that's my, that's my feelings. My concern here would be is that you, you read off that we can't discriminate based off of religion. And my concern would be that if we don't give the FERS money solely based off of that one incidence, that they could make the claim. That we're discriminating against them based off of religion. And so. You know, just, just from our point of view or our perspective. And I don't recall, I do recall. The FERS releasing a statement, I don't recall exactly what it was. But I don't ever recall that it went to court or that it was settled there. And so. I would hesitate to make a judgment based off of. Our own feelings on this. And have it come back that we discriminated against them based on their religious beliefs.
Mr. Donovan?
A quick response to that, but then got to my main point. The state trying to. Be careful about co-mingling funds for. Religious instruction or. Religious bigotry, if you want to call it that. It's actually a role of government to do that, and I'm not saying. Where I'm going on that, but that that is actually a legitimate thing to be discussing. I, I've expressed the similar concerns that Ms. Frazee has to the executive and the deputy executive when Ms. Frakes the other day. And, and, and so I'm uncomfortable with it. But that said. I, and I appreciate the, the executive being transparent and sharing with us. Where they're spending these monies that, that this administrative process that we authorized was set up to spend these monies. I, I actually. Don't. I'll help this. We, we. Give the executive and the administrative processes that we set up. The authority discretion to approve contracts of this amount. Without council review. I don't think we should actually have these, this resolution or the next resolution. I, I think the, the council had requested that the executive. Tell us. Where the money was going after these processes were set up for both for the small business thing and for the childcare thing. They did that and they, I think in an attempt to be even more open and transparent, asked for this resolution. And my regret, the resolution is then, then we're asked to start looking at each of these individual decisions, our jobs to approve the ones that are over forty thousand dollars. I don't like. The way the FERS went on that thing. But I, but I, I don't know, I think the council's being put in a, in a. Odd position. I, I want to resolve and support the effort that went into these programs and the, and the people who work into them. But by asking us to do these resolutions, we're kind of opening this can of worms. Where. We have these discussions, so. I'm not even sure. So if we, in terms of, in terms of, and I totally appreciate where Ms. Frazee's coming from, but if we open up. I just, I'm trying to figure out like procedurally, can, can, this isn't a supplemental budget request, this is an information being provided to us. So like where, where, how do we? Undo this process that we authorized and funded? And, and take out some of the things that I might not like or that I might, in the other case that I might, I think I have a conflict on these things and I don't want to vote on them. So it's, it's a really odd position, I think these resolutions are putting us in.
Mr. Bird?
Thank you. There's a couple of things around this that may be fairly complex. If you head down that road of eliminating people based on. What we feel is discriminatory, then I would tell you that I can look at this list and I feel that. At least one other organization on this list is discriminatory based on my. My definition of that and what I would say is the dictionary definition of that as well. But diving into the. How every one of these organizations. Reacts or what they say or what they do. That wasn't a part of our application process or the requirements that we laid out. And I think that it, it puts us in a really awkward position. Not only is it going to put us in a position. Where we're now discriminating such as Councilmember Ellenboss stated and could very likely have. Legal recourse is that honestly, we're not equipped for right now. With the current budget restraints that we're dealing with. But. It also puts us in a position where. We're actually causing potential detriment to several hundred children that attend that program when we have no replacement for them. So. I appreciate the sentiment here. But. Hurrying or withholding these funds from an organization. Is only going to hurt the people we're trying to support at the end of the day, which is all of these kids that need a place to go. And as we know, it's really, really hard to stand up new organizations within this space and to find excess capacity. And it's the reason we've put so much money towards it and the reason that we. Looked at putting additional funds towards the Boys and Girls Club, so. I don't agree with, with, with doing that in lieu of hurting these children. I think that's something that has to go through the court system and that the courts have to decide on. So.
Mr. Brown?
Oh, yield to Ms. Frazee and then come back, actually, Ben, Ben was up. Frazee, Ben, and then me.
Okay. Thought I was calling on people, but.
Well, I was just trying to differentiate.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Frazee?
I'll collect my thoughts and.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
So I don't know if this is exactly what Councilmember Donovan was getting at, but I think I agree with them. And where I agree with them is. You know, months and months and months and months ago. We. We voted. To surrender our ability to weigh in on this when we, when we granted millions of dollars and. Supported the emergency declaration and. Put unified command in motion that set up processes that run parallel to what we normally do. And so. This is kind of just. Symbolic and feel good. And thank you very much, I guess, for whoever's already approved this because it's going to happen regardless of whether we say yes or not, because we already told them they could do it. So I don't even know why we're voting on it because we already approved it four months ago. And the process for which it to happen, whether we should have done that or not is, is another conversation, but. Todd's right, somebody else put together the, the application process, somebody else put together how you qualified for it. And somebody else already determined who was going to get it and who wasn't. And we already approved the funding, so. I, I don't see a reason to even vote on it.
Councilmember Frazee?
Yes, so back to what Councilmember Bird said about. They won't be, the FERS won't be able to supply childcare. In their application, they did apply for, I don't know what they got PPP or other CARES Act funds. But fifteen thousand dollars is not going to break them, and if we allocate those funds to the other. Childcare facilities, they'll be able to take on more children. And, and I don't think this is a feeling, I feel that it's discriminatory. This young man was fired because he had a Facebook post with his partner, his male partner. And we can say this is, if we don't give it to them, it's against their religion. You know, it used to be that, you know, they, we used. Our teachings, our religious teachings to discriminate against people of color also and. So, you know, discriminating and, and they are going to have to sign this sheet that says we do not discriminate against, so if they sign this, then do we take it to court? Or because it's saying we do not discriminate against sexual orientation or hiring practices. And I know we don't need to see all of these, we, we ask to see all of the funding where it's going, we also did this, we, everyone wanted to see the businesses. That we're going to vote on also, we wanted to see what they are. And there's one business we asked to today to take out because there was a conflict of interest. So is that okay? I mean, I'm asking to take this out. Because they openly. Discriminated against a child who went through their program a lot of his life and then he was a counselor and then fired because they found this out after they hired him. That, that is what occurred Kathy and. I'll stop there.
Okay, Mr. Brown, is it okay if I call on you now?
With your permission, Barry, yes. Sorry. I'm just trying to be, I'm trying to defer to others who haven't spoken as often as I have, so. I, I got Mrs. Mrs. Frakes's email and I read it. I understand your comments and I'd like to propose this, so if Ms. Frazee would, would accept this. And before I do that, I just want to stress. You know, I've got several family members who are gay, male and female, who are in long-term committed relationships and they. You know, I find the idea of discriminating against any of them simply because of their sexual orientation to be absolutely abhorrent to everything I value. That being said, the FERS has applied for, for, for grant funding. We are at the moment judging them based on what they did in the past. They've applied for the funding and agreed in writing that they will not discriminate. So I think is if we tell them point blank. If you accept this money, you understand you're bound by this language not to discriminate. And if you do discriminate in the future, we will, we want the money back because you, under breach of contract.
Mr. Donovan?
I'm trying to catch up on the email because I had some things going on this morning. Just want to. I, I don't think Mr. Ellenboss was portraying what I was saying here. We, in one of the first council meetings I was on, gave the, it's two thousand sixteen. The executive authority to approve contracts at lower levels than, than would have to come to us for regular votes. So this, if we look at it as a contract, it could come to us for regular, that's nothing that we surrendered with executive powers. And the executive has been coming to us with requests that exceed the forty thousand dollar thing, so I'll come back to my point in a second, but that. And then us as a council approved these monies for this process, so I guess. And at that time, there was a discussion about whether we would be voting on these things. and at that time, there was a discussion about whether we would be voting on these things individually. And my sense was that there was a sense of the council that we would not, but that the executive would come to us and say, here's what it is. So that's sort of how I'm coming into this. And now I'm faced with this thing that I, I don't want to, you know, I'm uncomfortable with them getting the money, particularly with the, the non-discrimination thing that Ms. Frazee is bringing up. So I, I, I gotta think about it in another minute.
Councilmember Kirschner?
I just wanted to respond to Carol. And really it's a matter of semantics and really making sure that what we're talking about is what actually happened. So I'm not stating this because I agree with the actions or disagree with the actions. But the young man that we're talking about was offered employment. And then he was subsequently, the offer of employment was withdrawn before he had actually ever worked at the first. He, he did not work as a counselor. So this was a very unfortunate event. I'll just say that. But it wasn't like he was fired as in he'd been working and was fired. His offer of employment was withdrawn. And it's because his lifestyle went against their bylaws. And they are a disorganization. And whether or not you agree with discriminating against people that have sexual orientation that might not be heterosexual, I guess is beside the point. It went against their bylaws and that is why the offer was rescinded. So I just wanted to make sure that we're really clear on talking about what happened in this case accurately. Thank you.
Councilmember Bird?
Thank you. So a couple of things. Carol, when I'm saying opinion, I'm not saying it to the, to be offensive in any way or diminish the, what you're trying to get across. I'm, I'm saying it because as a, as I'm trying to look at things, especially in today's culture and all the things that are happening right now, I'm trying to be very careful and with what I feel like is social media and, and news and information and not say it happened here, but the manipulation that's, that's happening with, with limited information. And so I'm trying to be careful not to make a decision on things when I don't have all of the facts myself. And when a court hasn't actually gone through the process of saying, hey, we've looked at it all and, and this person or individual or organization is guilty. And so up until that point, for me, I'm defining that as an opinion. So it's not meant to be anything other than that. When I look at the 15,000, I could say it hurts the business. You could say it doesn't hurt the business. At the end of the day, neither one of us have seen the financials. All we know at this point in time is that they were at a point in which they needed the money. And so they applied and out of many, many applicants, a committee of individuals that reviewed everything, agreed that they needed the money and then granted them the $15,000. That $15,000 being withheld, is that one child that doesn't get childcare? It's probably what, 10 kids that don't get childcare if they really have to have the funds? Is it maybe that they can't afford any of the PPE gear necessary for the staff or the children to actually be there safely during these times? So that now the kids are running around or none of them are able to attend because they don't have the equipment necessary? I don't know. All I know is that they needed the funds. They went through a vetting process. And they, or the group of people that were assigned to vet them agreed. So I'm not willing to pull them out and harm what might be these children and their families right now with everything else that's going on. I know how difficult it is usually to find childcare. And now you, with everything that's happening and the limited childcare that's available and all the additional restrictions on how many kids that you can have in a room and how many teachers, how much harder is it going to be today than it was last year? I mean, I have to think that it's substantially more difficult. And so if something did happen, what would these families do? I don't have the answer to that and I'm not feeling comfortable to take that or make that, that choice without them. The budgeting process or the state and federal labor laws, the Councilmember Brown's point, you, they're going to sign the document and it says that they adhere to state and federal labor laws. If they go through the court process and the, the court says, hey, or we sue them or someone else does and we get the money back because the court says that they didn't adhere to those, that's one thing. But for us to not go through that process and make a decision, I wouldn't be comfortable with either. Those, our entire government structure has been set up with processes in place for these type of issues. The whole judicial system is in place to decide these type of issues by people that we hire and pay a substantial amount of money for, towards to go and look at all the facts. I don't know why we're, we're going to make that decision here without all of the facts and a full understanding of it. Ben, I appreciate your point on the budget process, but I don't feel like we gave the executive carte blanche. We approved $4 million in funding that early on for them to go spend. Honestly, I don't know what the full amount of money has been spent on or how it's been utilized, but this isn't out of that funding. And I think it's incredibly important that we get back to our standard operation of business. And that is we approve a budget amount and then we typically see that item again and we approve it contracts. If it exceeds $40,000 across even multiple vendors, and I would say that this falls into that same boat. Not having any input on what the grading criteria was, not having any input on who sat on the committee for the scoring and the panelists or what questions were asked of the organizations or how much money that they could get. I, I can't vote, I can't vote to approve this. Or, well, I, I can't, I don't feel comfortable just saying, hey, listen, we said you had the money and, and all of these other things that we had no input on were decided. And now I'm, I'm not going to decide whether to approve the people that got it too. If it was a matter of like, hey, we budgeted this money and then we created the structure for all of us to go through and we created that committee and we appointed the people to that committee and we reviewed the scoring mechanism, I feel more comfortable about that. But at the end of the day, the council's got to get back to what our core responsibilities are. And finance is a huge portion of that. So we needed to approve that budget. We gave that rough estimate on that. And now we need to approve the outcomes and the contracts for that. And that's exactly what I see happening here. And the direction we're heading for. So that, that's why we decided to do this in finance.
Mr. Brown?
So actually, I think the decision's got a lot easier, at least for me. If their bylaws say that they can discriminate, in fact, my, my guess is the bylaw, I haven't seen them, but my guess is the bylaws say they must discriminate. They must exclude people of a certain class. Then this application has been made with the knowledge that the moment they sign the application, they're in breach of the terms of the application. So they've either got to amend their bylaws and resubmit the application or amend their bylaws prior to receiving the money. Or they're in breach of, I, I don't, can we give it to them? If we know that their bylaws actively discriminate, then we know that they're not in compliance with the contract they've just signed. And I just want to remind people, there are thousands of communities across this country that have CCNRs, bylaws, discriminating against African-Americans, Native Americans and Jews. They were not allowed to live in those areas and those bylaws held up until they're overwritten by federal and state law. I'm not going to, I'm not going to support bylaws that, I mean, if this was a decision by a board on the fly based on the personalities or the executive director at the time, I, I wouldn't find it acceptable, but I could sort of understand how it would happen. But the fact that the organization has bylaws that say they can discriminate based on sexual orientation, that's really problematic to me.
Councilmember Frazee?
I was just going to go back to what I said before, Councilmember Bird. We're doing the same thing we did for, I see it as the same as today during our, with all the lists of businesses. You ask for a business to look at it and do you really think this is prudent or whatever word? And looked at one particular business in that list and it was only what, $6,500? And you didn't think it was right that that was in there? This may be a little different, but it's one particular business in that list, $15,000 that I would like to withdraw out of there.
Councilmember Ellen Boss and then Councilmember Kirschner?
I don't, I didn't have my hand up, but I, all I want to say is that I don't think the first should have discriminated against, against the young man and, and his sexual preferences. I don't think we should discriminate against the first for their religious beliefs. Which one takes precedence? I'm not the judge.
Councilmember Kirschner?
I, I would just like to clear up my comment since Councilmember Brown may have misunderstood. This was the response from the first executive director on June 14th, 2019. It's on Facebook. Anybody can look it up. And what he is talking about is that they've got an approved doctrinal statement, which are approved by our board of directors and our organizational bylaws, which outline their religious beliefs. I don't want to paraphrase. I'll just read it. "We are a faith-based organization whose mission is not only to love kids, but to introduce them to God who loves them as well. A God that we feel reveals himself primarily in the Bible. This then is what we are all about. We seek to accomplish this mission through our programs within the context of approved doctrinal statements, which are approved by our board of directors and in our organizational bylaws." So that is the comment about the bylaws. I want to make sure I was clear. They have an approved doctrinal statement that did not allow them to continue to offer employment to this young man. So I don't know that it says they are going to discriminate and I have not seen the bylaws. And they may have been changed since June 13th, 2019. So again, I just want to make sure that I'm being clear. Thank you.
Councilmember Bird, I thought I saw your hand before you disappeared. Yeah, I'll go with Brown and then Donovan.
So if they, if they're willing to give us a statement that they no longer discriminate or they're willing to, then I'm fine. Because if they, if, if in future they are not going to discriminate, that's fine. But if, if, if they cannot provide that, then what they've done is sign an application, which is not accurate on its face. And therefore they're not eligible for the money. It's as simple as that.
Okay, Bird, looks like you're back. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know what's going on with the internet today. I'm going to say it's just all the kids that are going back to school online. They, so. I, I don't feel, Councilmember Rand, you're interpreting your own state law right now. And quite honestly, you're, you're not an attorney or a judge. And so I, I feel like you're going to put us in a situation where we end up in a lawsuit that we lose millions of dollars. It doesn't make any sense to me why we would, we would actively put ourselves in that situation. I mean, what I don't hear you saying right now is anything related to, well, every single applicant out there should be required to open up their bylaws and all of their corporate documents so that we can then look at every organization that applied and see if any of them have these rules. You've singled out one specific entity and are changing the criteria for that specific organization. That's not a good place for us to be in, period. So that in itself is called discrimination. So you, you're going to openly put us in a place where now we are breaking the rules against an organization that when I Google it, and Google is not an expert, I get that, but my understanding is that they might be within their bounds. Whether I agree with it or not, that's not my law. I'm not that judge. I don't have the grounds over that. It wasn't a part of the criteria. And we can't, in my opinion, hold them to something that not everyone else is, is being held to. It doesn't make any sense. I'm going to also go back real quick because, Councilmember Frazee, you keep bringing up the business situation and that is very, very different. So let's just put that out there for what it is instead of like beating around the bush on it. I very specifically was discussing the county executives' business applying for a business loan. When we have eight or 900 businesses in our community applying for loans and only a couple hundred of those being selected for those loans. And one of them is the executive's business that is listed on his website as his business that he is an owner of. I do very much believe it's a conflict of interest. And we do have other specific laws or, and rules in place for elected officials and employees of the county on things that we can do as it relates to the county. For instance, all of the computers down there that are in the basement that are unused. I can't go down there and grab one of those for my children if my kids needed a computer because I work for the county. I can't, and no one in my house can participate in purchasing any port or any property that's been brought back or collected, recalled, repo'd, whatever, foreclosed on is the word I'm looking for, due to not paying their taxes. Because there's a conflict of interest there. That in itself, I expressed, I didn't feel comfortable with and said that he needed to make that decision on his own and his own judgment. I didn't exclude him from that. I didn't tell him his business couldn't apply. I said, here's the way I'm looking at it and you need to make the decision on your own. I don't understand how you're tying those two things together or, or why. Because quite frankly, to me, they're very, very, very different situations. So this process has been put in place. If you guys want more control over this stuff, then let's step up and actually start doing what we're supposed to be doing again. Instead of just writing blank checks on everything and deferring all of our authority across the board.
Mr. Donovan?
I missed part of, I had a, I had an invasive medical procedure or I could have gone to the finance committee and I'm like, invasive medical procedure or this discussion. And I'm not sure which was worse. So, but, but coming off of what Mr. Bird was saying, so, and I had missed that discussion. If that was, the applicant was requested to consider, I, I don't know how it went, but could something similar happen with this where we could ask the applicant to reconsider their request? I, I don't know how things, how things, how things went this morning. But I, I, I think, I don't, I think we're convincing anybody of anything here. So I'm just trying to figure out a way we can move forward.
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I, I, I'm trying to get this short. The, the contract has a non-discrimination clause, which Ms. Frazee read out before. And I just want to remind, it says that the person is agreeing that they understand that if they accept the money, they will not engage in discrimination, including to all persons without discrimination as to any person's race, color, religion, sex, sexual orientation, disabled veteran condition, et cetera, et cetera. The point is, we have, we have, there's been an experience in the past where it appears they have discriminated based on their bylaws or doctrine or whatever document they have that they feel gives them the right to discriminate. And I don't think it's, I think it's perfectly reasonable to say, we want an explanation for this. And because you cannot discriminate, use these funds to discriminate. So if you tell us those bylaws no longer apply or that doctrine no longer applies, then fine. But if it does apply, you, you're not eligible for the funds, period. That's what the contract says.
Mr. Bird?
I'll point out that in finance, our finance committee today, Councilmember Brown, what you had said at that point in time, and we can go back and watch that, is, hey, you be comfortable with this if they signed a document saying they weren't going to discriminate. And now we find out that they are required to sign a document that says they will not discriminate and you're changing the benchmark. You're saying, well, now that document's not good enough. Now I want to see their bylaws and I want XYZ additional information. So I'm just curious, you know, if we get down that road, what's the next, what is the next benchmark that you're going to require? That, that's not required of any other organization, let's be clear. That, that's not required of any other organization, let's be clear.
I will require this, I, I will vote to require the same from any organization I believe is inherently in breach or has a history.
So it's selected.
That has a history of being in breach of the terms of the agreement we're asking them to sign. The difference between now and lunchtime is at lunchtime, I had not seen the language they were asked to, to sign. I may have seen it, but I didn't remember it, but Ms. Ms. Frakes sent it to us again and I now have it in front of me. And the other data point that has changed is, is Ms. Kirchner's comment that she believed it was in their bylaws or their doctrine. So I thought it was actually an arbitrary decision by their executive director. I didn't realize until tonight that it appears to be something in writing as a policy. That's what's changed for me.
So I'm really, I'm really struggling with what, what the right move here is, so councilmember Brown, can you help me straighten something out here? So how do you rectify then? If you've made your decision, how do you rectify the fact that you've made your decision based solely on their religious view? Cause then aren't you discriminating just like they did with their employee? I, I, and I'm being dead serious here.
I don't care what their religious view is.
That's what I'm struggling with.
Okay. I have not, until this very moment, I have not mentioned the word religion at all. To me, it is not a religious issue. I know plenty of people who discriminate based on reasons that got nothing to do with religion. They just don't like a person of a particular color or a relig- or another religion or a sexual orientation or whatever.
Yeah, go ahead, Ben.
Now, this is just my understanding of the situation, but my understanding of the situation was their reasoning that they felt that they were justified in their actions was that it went along with their religious doctrine, so. Now, if they just, if they just fired him because they said we hate gays, I'm not sure that they think that, but you know, if that's what they were saying, then I, then I can kind of, then I, I'm on board, but I, I don't think that was their response, whether I agree with their response or not, I'm, I'm trying to be respectful of everybody here and, and to me, my interpretation is it was, it was their religious views that made, had them, you know, justified in their actions and then we're justifying our actions based off of their action, which was their religious view, so then their religious view is then what we're basing our actions off of. And the document they signed said that, you know, religion was one of the protected areas as much as sexual preference, so I'm trying to figure out what direction to go here and uh, be a bigot.
Councilmember Donovan.
I'm also trying to figure out the direction to go, um, so I'm thinking, maybe the best course of action here, it, it, it could be detrimental to kind of change, uh, the, the award of a single grantee here, detrimental to the county. And I also really don't want to have to vote to support for, um, maybe getting the grantee its money, so either abstaining or voting no on the resolution, and I'll probably just abstain on the resolution, that's not speaking to the motion, but that's kind of getting the motion advanced a bit, I guess.
Okay, keep in mind, there is no resolution, this is only asking for a motion.
I thought the motion, I thought it was asking us for a resolution, the, the, the thing in our packet, that was, that was, that, I'll find the language. So then what is the item we're actually meant to be voted on?
Ask for a motion of support.
Which sounds like-
That's exactly it, ask for a motion of support. But not an actual resolution.
Okay, so then maybe the course of action would be to just not have a motion of support. Um, I'm not saying I don't support the general thing here, but I think we've been put in a position where, just kind of lose, lose how we vote on, on both of these things.
I'm almost, I'm almost to the point where I would throw it back to the administration and let the folks that dropped it on our lap sort it out and come back to us, but, uh, Mr. Brown?
Well, I, no, I'd like to get closure on, get the, the motion to, to allow the executive to go forward and start writing checks. To, to Mr. Ellenboss's position, if the argument used that this is their religion, therefore I'm, I'm against their religion because they want to discriminate based on their religion, my question to him would be, if their religion said I wanted, we don't want kids who, uh, who are African-American because of our religious beliefs, would that be acceptable? I mean, where do you draw, I mean, and I didn't think so, Ben, I really didn't think so. So my point is, you, you don't get to pick and choose, you don't get to say you're, you're, you don't discriminate except for this, this group over here. Right, you either don't discriminate or you, you're either discriminator, you don't discriminate, period. And, and so my, the motion on the floor is a motion to amend the, I, I can't remember the main motion, but it was to amend the main motion. And so i- if Ms. Frazee will go along with me, I, I'd like to clear up the motion to amend, and that is that they have to provide a confirmation that they will not discriminate on any condition, race, religion, sexual orientation, or whatever. That is the condition, that's a pre-existing condition of the contract they already signed. And that is a requirement for them to confirm that they won't discriminate in order for them to get the money. That's it.
Mr. Donovan.
Is there a main motion on the floor?
Yep, there was.
I believe a hundred years ago, somebody did move approval.
Okay.
Councilmember Ellenboss.
Yeah, it's not really, I, you know, my, my view of the Bible and their view of the Bible may, may, or interpretation of the Bible may be different. I, you know, I'm not running their organization and, you know, I probably would run it differently. Yeah, this is a hard one.
Councilmember Frazee.
So Rod, if that was a friendly amendment, I accept it.
And that, that is asking them to do nothing other than comply with the contract that they've already signed.
Okay, now, now we have an amended amended motion. Um, does, is there any, uh, conversation on that? Yes, Mr. Donovan.
So the main motion will still be just a motion in support of what the executive has done. I'm trying to, is that it?
I, I believe so.
Not operating any money, we're-
I think we need to hear from Karen.
Dan, do you have something to add?
I, I just wanted to clarify, they haven't signed that contract at this point. And at, at most, I think that contract requires that they not discriminate in the use of that fifteen thousand dollars. We don't have the ability to control their practices beyond that.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Sedu.
If I may, I think it's an interesting, uh, discussion, but I tend to agree with, uh, Ms. Frakes' take on that. Uh, we have not, we have a standard agreement we prepared, nobody has signed it yet. We can send it to them and along with that, that document. And, uh, it's their prerogative to sign it or not sign it. And if they sign it, then they sign the agreement, they sign that document as well, which is for everybody. And if they refuse to sign it, then they refuse to, uh, participate in this, uh, this, uh, uh, program. I think that would be more plausible way to, to move forward.
Councilmember Brown, then Donovan.
All right, you're getting fatigued, I know. Um, I, I agree they haven't signed the contract, they have signed the online application, but if they do sign the contract, the, the wording says the recipient shall conduct its business and use funds in a manner that is non-discriminatory.
Mr. Donovan.
So that will be done to everybody who will be receiving this contract.
Yes, everybody, there'll be standard, yeah.
Okay, and that won't be seen as changing the criteria for the applications or anything?
No, no.
That's good enough.
My point, they, they just need to be reminded, but they just need to be pointed at them.
Yes, just to bring to their attention that they may say, oh, I didn't even notice this. Something, sometimes it does happen. But, but it will be included in for everybody.
Mr. Bird, you've been a part of the process, it's what's already in place. It's there, we're just back to square one, correct?
Apparently, yes.
Phew, glad we got that one over.
Carol, I'd like to suggest, I think we've probably made a point. I don't know if there's a need for doing a motion. I know you feel about that.
Will there be a discussion with each of the recipients about this discrimination clause?
I, I, I think that is impractical because we are giving the same money to the businesses as well, uh, to the childcare as well, so there is not, and I think that we will include that, uh, to, to everybody. Uh, in, in that agreement document, we have to send it and everybody has to sign it. And that allows, and later on, it will be a public document. And if there is a violation, anybody can take action. Private citizens as well as the county officially can, can bring it up that if there was a violation of a contract.
Mr. Brown? Unmute, please.
How would you feel if we require that every recipient gets the cover letter that draws their attention to the non-discrimination clause? As a requirement for receiving the funds?
I, I'll leave it to Karen, what you suggest, Karen. You're muted.
I don't see a problem with pointing out a provision that's in every contract, uh, in a cover letter.
Yep.
Mr. Donovan.
So, but trying to make sure I understand, is it a cover letter or not, they will receive something that they have to sign that says their advice, okay?
They have to sign, we have to sign. It's a contract, so.
Yes, Ms. Frazee.
So do I need to withdraw my motion to take them out? Is that what we're asking here? Or do we?
I think if the understanding is that there is going to be that cover letter, I think we could, we got to forward to withdraw the motion.
Okay, with the expectation of a cover letter, I will draw my motion.
Okay, the motion has been withdrawn, we are now back to the main motion of, uh, moving to, uh, a motion of support. Any further discussion?
Yeah, what, I, tell my count, just a second, um, we don't get anything written down, we're just gonna say we support. There's not a-
Yeah, actually, the original motion was of approval, the, the committee adjusted it for both of these to, to recommend a, a motion to approve.
That's right, you, you did that in committee this morning, didn't you, you changed the language to be approved, right?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Can we just, can we just read the motion we're, we're voting on that, please?
I'll, I'll have to ask staff to do that.
It's a motion of support for AB twenty twenty-three seven-four.
I, I thought it was a motion of approval.
It, it's a motion of approval of the list of candidates listed in AB two zero two zero dash three seven-four.
And the motion is coming from your committee, so I think your language that you just said would be the appropriate language.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, please call a roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss? Ben Ellenboss?
Yeah, I'm thinking. I'm gonna vote no on what I feel is a flawed system.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
That passes six to one. Okay, Mr. Bird, where were we?
Yeah, um, item number three. AB two zero two zero dash three seven-six. Request authorization for the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Walton County and Washington State Department of Commerce for funding to develop and expand shelter programs in the amount of one million one hundred ninety-four thousand two hundred and eleven dollars. This passed in the committee two-one and I so move.
Okay, uh, discussion on this motion? Mr. Bird?
The, uh, long time ago, I, I mentioned the reason I voted no on item number one, uh, this is the exact same thing, and so I'm, I'm, again, I'm looking for that diagram and that information that breaks down all of the funding and sources recipients and outcomes of this funding before approving additional funds.
Other discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Is, is Mr. Sedu there still there?
Yes, I am here.
Sure, um, so there, there's, is there any change to the list since this morning or not?
That's not a separate item.
Oh.
This, this is a different item, this is actually a granted-
My, my, sorry, my apology, forgive me.
This, this is actually a grant from them to us, that's what it is, we are signing in agreement to accept the grant money of one point one nine million.
Yeah, so I'm getting a bit punchy.
Hey, uh, discussion on that? Okay, please call a roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Hi.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes five to two.
Councilmember Frazee?
Point of order, do we have to go back to, um, seventeen and eighteen? The childcare?
We do, but, yeah.
You're gonna wait.
At the end after everything else.
Okay.
Thank you for asking. Uh, the next item on our agenda is what I'm calling item number four, it's AB two zero two zero dash three eight-nine. Request authorization for the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Walton County and Fire Protection District number seven to provide- to provide COVID number nine, COVID nineteen testing. It was added on September eleventh. That was referred to the council because we didn't have enough time to discuss, so I will move for approval. But I will need a second.
Second.
Bird moves, Brown seconds, discussion. Okay, please call a roll.
Yeah, Chair, Councilmember Ellenboss had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ben, I didn't see you, go ahead.
Sorry, you move fast and I flipping back and forth in papers and I probably didn't have my hand up in a timely enough fashion, but so we're gonna, we're talking about giving money to District Seven firefighters for administering COVID tests, that's what we're talking about here, right?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yes.
Did, Point Roberts was doing this months and months and months ago, did, did they ever request funding or get funding, or is that on the agenda here somewhere?
No, they did not request, this was actually, the request was not from them, they're doing it. It was a request from us, like I tried to explain that we needed people, last time when we started this drive-in testing, P-South offered three employees for free for a week or two, or two consecutive three-day testing. Then they said that they don't have staff available. And the other option we had was either use county staff, well, Health Department didn't have available staff to fit all the shifts. Then we had the option to go to like visiting nurse or other people, private companies, and their bid was $120 an hour for each person. So if we get two or three people and, and it is an eight-hour day, that was very expensive, then we thought, okay, what are the other chances, and I talked to the Unified Command and talked to EMS, is there other people who are qualified to do this job? And then they said, well, let's talk to the fire districts, and they talked to District Seven, they said, yes, they can spare some people, they're, you know, according to their schedules, that they will be able to help with this thing and allocate people. So we said we will reimburse their wages. So that's what we are trying to do.
Any other discussion?
And we're using CARES Act dollars to pay for that.
Mr. Bird?
Will we be including any kind of metrics into that, so that we know how many people they're, they're testing per dollar that we spend?
I to means to District Seven?
Sorry?
No, I, I, I didn't quite understand what the matrix is for. That matrix, the, the way it works is that we have an online registration appointment system. People make appointments. And then we go do testing and we may reach a location, there are only twenty people who signed up. Then we go to another position, because this is a mobile unit, we go throughout the county, all school district areas. And then we go to the next place, there may be ninety people signed up. And now we know that we have given that matrix already to the council that when we did the testing at the civic center, that we were able to do eight or nine hundred people in, in, in two days of eight hours a day. That was our matrix of efficiency and it was less sufficient because people didn't pre-register, so people had to come and sit in their car, it took half an hour to take their details, their insurance, their other things, forms to fill. And we now eliminated that. We, I mean, the Health Department did all the work, I'm just talking about them. What they did is they said, this is a better way that people sign up online and they fill out the paperwork form, everything. So when they, when we go to the site where they are supposed to come, they just drive up the car, they give their last name and their other identification. And they, they test them and out they go. So it's like, go, 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 so we are two, three times more efficient than where we started with this, so I, I don't know that how we can apply that matrix to it.
Bird?
Yeah, maybe I can restate that, we do have the data and we have looked at and found a more efficient way of doing things. So I, I just felt like it would be prudent to have a metric in there based on the data that we have that says it takes us an average of five, you know, minutes per person to accomplish a test. And that's what we're looking for as far as a benchmark for this program as well, so that if we don't get to a place where it's taking thirty minutes per test.
We, we. Okay. We will let the Health Department, I will check that they have the data, they definitely have the data when they go to a site, how many people are registered and how many people get tested in a day. And in a good day, they may test four hundred people if they have registered. If they had registered only two hundred people, we still go there. We, we make appointment, if there are twenty people showing up, we still go there. We don't say that, oh, twenty people showed up, let's wait for a week, when they get to fifty, then we'll go there. That's not the criteria we are using. We give them a schedule, we give them a place, we give them a time. And then how many people are there, we just go and service them. But I will, I will check in with, with the Health Department what kind of data they have. And, and, and this is much, much more sufficient than having a people standing line up for three hours for getting a test done and, and filling forms while sitting in the car.
I, I appreciate that. I know how much we've improved the program and I know how important this is to a lot of our community members. So I just want to make sure as we take this program and hire another organization to fulfill it for us, that we're able to continue to maintain the same level of service that we have already. And so that's what I'm looking for, or we hope that we would have included.
Sure.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, please call a roll.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. That passes unanimously.
Right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is AB 2020-385, report and request for a motion, report and request for a motion of support from the Waukam County Council in acknowledgement and support of distributing these CARES Act dollars to our very valuable businesses as recommended by the countywide business review team comprised of representatives from Waukam County, City of Bellingham, and small cities, Port of Bellingham Regional Economic Partnership, Western Washington University Small Business Development Center, Waukam Community Foundation, and Bellingham Regional Chamber of Commerce. The item was added on September eleventh. The committee approved the list of recipients on this to one, and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion, discussion.
Yeah, very, I, I apologize, I should, I'll rephrase that. The committee voted to approve the list of recipients or applicants on this list.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Brown?
Are there any amendments to the list?
Yeah, there is, and I gotta rephrase that one more time, sorry. The committee approved the list of applicants listed under the Waukam County column of, of the attachment. There has been one, one change to that, that I'm aware, the Spice Hut has requested removal from, from that list of applicants, is my understanding.
And that's from the City of Bellingham's list, Mr. Sadhu, you had your hand up?
Yeah, that's exactly what I wanted to put it on record, that it was on the, it was not the county dollars, it was the City of Bellingham dollars, but after the discussion, I think that we, that the Spice Hut has sent an email withdrawing their application.
Mr. Ellenboss, I saw your hand go up.
I was just gonna point out as well that it was, that the Spice Hut was not applying for the county portion, they were applying for the Bellingham portion.
Mr. Brown?
And just procedurally, for, for the sake of the executive and Mr. Schroeder, the, the money that each of the other jurisdictions is doing to a degree has come from county money, so do you need, need a motion from us covering the entire amount or just the unincorporated portion?
I think as, Tyler Schroeder, I think as recognized by Councilmember Bird will work just fine.
Okay, alright.
Any other discussion on the motion? Mr. Ellenboss?
I think just like on the childcare one, I'm not a big fan of the system here, so my vote's probably gonna be no.
Councilmember Donovan?
I, and the folks who worked on processing these applications, it's all good, I'm gonna abstain because I just know many people on the list, so.
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I, I was actually involved in this process alongside Mr. Schroeder, Chris Quinn, Gina Stark, Giai Cagrosso, I think there's somebody else, but I can't remember who it was. But I just want to attest that it was a very disciplined process, difficult, and I won't say it was perfect. But I think at the end of the day, there was a lot of consideration done to try and make it as, as objective as possible.
Mr. Bird?
I hate to do it, but I'm, I'm gonna, um. The just for, for the sake of process, we will be using whatever process with these applicants that we're also using with the childcare applicants, so that they're identical across the board, is that correct?
Mr. Bird, are you, Tyler Schroeder, are you referring to the contracts that we talked about in the childcare?
Yeah, you're talking about the, the process, or if we're sending additional communication, any, any changes to one will be, it'll be seamless across all, all the programs where we're giving money.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Donovan?
What'd you say to committee votes?
Well, on the unincorporated part, because they broke it up into, into sections, each jurisdiction had its own committee. Mr. Schroeder knows this better than I do. But I, I participated in the, the unincorporated portion. And we, we spent a lot of time trying to go back and forth to make the process as objective as possible. And awaited criteria for determining we got it. So it wasn't, it wasn't elegant, elegant, wasn't elegant, it wasn't perfect, but it was pretty good.
Any more discussion? Okay, please call a roll.
Todd Donovan?
Abstain.
Ben Ellenboss?
Maybe abstain's probably the right thing, I'm gonna abstain too.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
That passes five zero with two abstentions.
I do.
Got anything left, Tyler?
Yeah, at least two more, the, going back to the introduction items, item number seventeen, AB 2020-365, request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract between Waukam County and Waukam Family Y MCA for operational losses incurred at their childcare facilities as a result of COVID nineteen impacts in the amount of $292,221. Pages two eighty through three thirty-one in your packet. This was forwarded to the council. I will move approval, but I will need a second.
I'll second, but it's not in the introduction, it's in the consent list, is that right?
Oh, you're right, you're, yes.
Yeah, that, that's correct, Todd. Do we have a second?
A second, and then I ask.
I missed that part, sorry. Discussion? All right, seem done, call the roll, please.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
And that passes six to one.
All right, next item and last item, I believe, AB, or number eighteen on the consent list, AB 2020-367, request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract between Waukam County and Moore Smiles Learning Center to provide funding to cover operational losses incurred at their childcare facilities as a result of COVID nineteen impacts in the amount of $50,000. Pages three thirty-two through three fifty-four in your packet. This was forwarded to the council as a whole, and I will move for approval, but again, will need a second.
I'll second again.
Okay, Bird moves, Donovan seconds, and Ellenboss is in with, with discussion.
So which one of these childcare groups is, is doing the running the preschools in the schools that are closed because of COVID? Is that the YMCA?
Yes, Ben, that's my understanding.
That's my understa, but I don't know, I don't have that information. I think Ms. Kerschner brought this up, that there, somebody was doing it, it was in relation to YMCA. I, I don't have that information.
So are they renting the buildings from the school district, or are they having them?
I have no idea, I have no idea.
So taxpayers are funding it one time and then funding it again?
We can, we can check into that, I don't know, I don't even know which instance, which school and which organization has used. And if somebody can let me know, we can do some checking on that. It was just brought up in, in the meeting, but no details were given.
Other discussion? Okay, please call a roll.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird? Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Okay, I think you're done, huh?
No, there's one more item, actually.
She just read the text.
AB 2020-356, which was on consent and moved to other items because it was a flood control zone District Board of Supervisors item. I think Barry has it on his script.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, um, alright, so if that's a flood control, uh, flood control zone board issue, is that, that one that I, you want me to read in, or is that one that Barry should read in? I mean, we did vote on it in committee, if it makes any difference, but.
This is the pick, Ben?
Again?
This is the Wacom Conservation District, twenty nineteen interlocal and subrecipient agreement. Yes, you're right, it's the, the pick.
I have the language in front of me, Tyler, if you want me to read it.
Yeah, I, I don't know that the finance committee has any bearing on the flood control zone stuff, so do we need to read that in as the flood control or acting as the flood control zone? Okay, go for it.
Yes, I'll go for it. Okay, this is AB twenty twenty dash three fifty-six. Request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract amendment between Wacom County and the Wacom Conservation District to amend the twenty nineteen interlocal and subrecipient agreement for the pollution identification and correction program, non-dairy agricultural technical assistance in the amount of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars, or a total amended contract amount of five hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars. And this is the council acting as the, uh, uh, flood control board of supervisors. So, uh, I would open it up to the council, Mr. Ellenboss.
So do, do we have anybody to give us a presentation on this? Because it, I feel like we just approved the same item like a few months ago, um, for the pick program. I think we approved it unanimously, so how is this different than what we already did? It even seems like it's in the same watersheds, or are we just, is this the same thing that we approved before, just doubling the amount of money?
Councilmember Donovan?
No, definitely not doubling, doubling the amount. I, I will look into that. I don't even remember that we passed it before. I'll, I'll look into that, but it's not doubling.
Mr. Brown had to sign up first.
Do we have a motion or not? If, if not, I move approval.
I'll second.
We did not, now we do, and we have a second, okay?
And, and, as far as the, I think Erica brought this to us while, um, but I'm, I'm also kind of like, it's almost eight-thirty, so it's not that late, but I'm a bit confused on the process too, but, um, if this is something we've seen before that we hadn't actually acted on, but we don't have Erica here, so.
Mr. Ellenboss?
Yeah, I, and I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent on that, but I, I really feel like we've, we voted on funding the pick program and, uh, you know, Erica had a presentation for us and, um, if you guys recall, I asked if it was regulatory in nature, and, um, anyway, it, it appears to be the exact same thing, but could be wrong. Be nice if, is anybody from, no, doesn't look like it.
Mr. Donovan?
I was gonna ask the, uh, I was gonna ask the deputy executive or the executive if this is something that we could just, I mean, I love the pick program, I totally support this, but I, I actually can't remember where we were in August when this thing maybe came to us originally, so is there any harm in?
I, I will ask Tyler if he remembers, or maybe Dana, if they remember. Otherwise, uh, we can take it up next time, it's.
I don't remember the item, sorry.
Yeah.
So back in, uh, July, on July seventh, there was an item that Erica brought forward under Agenda Bill twenty twenty-two seventy-one. And it was to request authorization for the executive to sign into an inter-agency agreement with the Wacom County Flood Control Zone District and Department of Health in support of the pick program for the amount of four hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two, or a total amended amount of one million, forty-seven, seven-three-two. Uh, so I'd be fairly confident that these are two separate actions, uh, just related to the pick program. Uh, but I would have to confirm that through a, a little bit of work tomorrow. But Councilmember Ellenboss, I think that's probably what you're remembering.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Ellenboss?
Oh, that, I was drunk, I was in the health department, and the difference here, we, this isn't drunk on what, what the conservation district, but it's all, I mean, they're all wrong.
It was down south on Darkwater.
That was like dark water on steroids.
I think you even froze in that position there.
Ben, I'm your father.
Let's, Ben, do it all again. Ben, we didn't, it was really cool, but we didn't hear you.
We didn't hear any of it, it was cool, though, yes.
Okay.
It's still cool. This mentions non-dairy. Uh, it, it could be that this is the dairy portion of it, I don't know, I just read the, uh, the resolution again. It, it mentions non-dairy. So we'll, 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 we will confirm it.
I believe the item in Ju-, I believe the item in July was the acceptance of the grant from the Department of Health. And I think the item in front of us today is to get the dollars to the.
Actually going to Conservation District to actually go do the work. That's what it is.
This is all right, I'm getting ready, I mean, to go to the, to pay.
Write us a letter.
So, I guess, a lot, is there any way we can pump this first two weeks, we, we talk to Erica and get more clarity, because, um, how she said it, that the pick program, and I'm sorry for being this old, I'm, I'm, this is super important to me and my period. And so, um, how the pick program and our training and this document does seem going with my, my experience with the pick program, so, um,
I think that was the coolest request we ever had to hold for two weeks. I'd be okay with that.
Who wants to, who wants to second that masterpiece?
Just, just for clarity, I heard you were paying for dinner next time, was that right, Ben? Was that what you said?
Yeah, now he's muted.
I maybe we hold, I maybe we hold until next meeting.
I second. We have a motion and a second to hold till next meeting, is there any other discussion? Please call a roll.
Kathy Kirschner? Kathy Kirschner?
Oh, yes, I guess I was still open.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yeah.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Is that everybody, including the, all the aliens? It passes unanimously. And now I think you're done, Tyler, right?
Yeah, I think, uh, Dana, good to go here?
Yes, you're done.
Perfect.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna jump in here with our, uh, we had a committee the whole executive session this morning. We had two items. Uh, the first item was AB twenty twenty dash three forty-seven. It was discussion of pending litigation with civil deputy George Roche, and the case is Cooper as personal representative of the state of Paula Jefferson et al. Versus Wacom County et al., US District Court, Western District of Washington. Case number two twenty-sash-CV dash zero one one nine six. Um, this was, uh, no, no action was taken, this was for information only. Uh, the second.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, I have to read something in the record. And we have to take a vote.
Oh, yeah, 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 I was, yes, I was thinking that was on the second item, but you're right. Uh, Mr. Brown has a motion to read into the record.
I hereby move to approve defense and indemnification of Wacom County employee defendants Bill Elfo, Wendy Jones, Caleb Erickson, Adam Miller, Cheryl Cardinal, Matt Turner, Jason McDonald, Matthew Carrion, Tim Keel, Krista Robinson, Jeffrey Heineman, Violet Ignisova, Mira Brown, Joshua Farmer, and contractor Stuart Adams named in Cooper as personal representative of the estate Paula Jefferson et al. Versus Wacom County et al., US District, Western Court of Washington, number two, colon, two zero dash, CV dash, zero one one nine six, I move approval.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Brown moves, Donovan seconds, discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you repeat that, please? I didn't hear it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. The second item was discussion of potential litigation with, uh, with civil deputy prosecuting attorney George Roche regarding ordinance to revise Wacom County Code two point zero nine, public defender's office to take place in executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two point thirty, point one ten, paren one, paren little i. Uh, this is the one that was, uh, we discussed it with, uh, the attorney. There was no action taken, and this is for information only.
Uh, so, Barry, do we have to say why that was in executive session?
I, I just, the, the title I read explains it all.
Okay, you got it.
Yes, Karen sent me a corrected version of the title with all the, the statute recitals. Alright. I think we're at introduction items, so I have a motion to introduce.
May I introduce?
Have a second.
Second.
Uh, Donovan moves, Bird seconds, discussion on these items? Seeing none, please call a roll? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Bird.
Uh, discussion on item number one, AB two zero two zero dash three six eight. The, uh, there's a, a few items that are gonna be lumped in on this, this county budget request. They, um, and then one specifically for a fairly large amount of money to the health department, I wanted to say it's, it's six hundred thousand roughly. It includes a whole bunch of stuff that's in there. I'm wa-, I, I would like that somehow to be included in a different way, so that we have more clarity on, on where the funds are going and can vote on individual items versus voting on all of the health department spending together as well as with the other items in, inside of that county budget request. Does that make sense?
I, does, does the administration need to react somehow to that? Do you need to clarify that item next, in two weeks? I, I don't exactly know what you're asking for.
Senator Deputy Executive, I think you're kind of hitting on what Councilmember Ellenboss might have indicated earlier. With all of the budget supplemental items being lumped together in one proposal, uh, it makes for council decision. And so you're looking for the health department DOH grant for additional staff at two hundred and thirty-eight thousand to be separated from that?
Yes, in part, I, I would, I want it pulled out, so it is separate. Uh, the, because I think for the same reason Ellenboss stated before, it forces us into a position where we have to either vote on everything or vote against everything. But more specifically, when I'm looking at the breakdown of, of that budget request for the health department, it feels like there's a number of things included in there. And I, I would like to know what all of those different elements are independently, how much they're gonna cost, and have the ability to vote on those individually, so.
Okay, great, I, I, we can provide additional information, Councilmember Bird, to the health department, budget supplement.
Yeah, I, I just don't want to be put in a place where I have to vote against the entire bucket of things because there's a couple of things in there that I might not like, essentially.
I'll have to confirm that process, um, because we usually don't separate out each one of those budget supplementals and council can pull them out, is my understanding, but I don't know that process as well off the top of my head.
Yeah, and, and so when I read that, it, it feels like this maybe is, is part of the marketing contract for the, the social media, but it also feels like maybe there's hiring a, a specialist for communications in there that's separate from that, and then there's additional funding for other positions possibly as well, as well as other supplies. So that's a whole bunch of different stuff in one request. And, yeah, it, it'd be nice if it was separate.
Yeah, that's great, uh, great job reading through that budget supplemental information because you actually got a, a pretty good understanding of what it is. Uh, so, but we'll, we'll, we'll make sure to give you additional information on it.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Ellenboss?
So, for Mr. Schroeder, to give the rock off once in a while, at least, these six items look like they're all coming out the same thing, whereas the one earlier tonight, every, every item came from an individual one, and we all got.
I'll take that as a compliment, Councilmember Ellenboss.
It's, uh, you're getting.
Okay, so, uh, any other discussion on this motion for introduction for these items? Seeing none, uh, please call a roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Okay, uh, we're at committee reports.
Excuse me, Barry, um, you still have appointments to do, if you could back up to those, please?
Ben, you were shaking your head, did you vote no? I couldn't hear it, sorry. It's six to one. Think I lost that page, Ben, through all this.
Barry, I have it here, if you want me to read it in.
Yeah, go ahead.
Alright, there, there are two separate ones, so the first one's AB two zero two zero dash three five one. Confirmation appointment of council members to serve on two subcommittees of a five-county regional cooperation group, Skagit, Wacom Island, San Juan, and Snohomish, pages six twenty through six twenty-one in your packet. I will move approval.
Second?
I'll second, and I'm, I'm.
Mr. Brown seconded, but Mr. Donovan, go ahead.
Yeah, we, so, the, this is the moment where we do this, or we're just saying we're gonna do this later. The, the agenda item doesn't make that clear.
This would be confirming what I believe took place at the meeting on the twentieth of August, which was appointing Councilmember Brown to the policy group for that larger group. And then in addition to that, I believe the council needs to select one member to serve as a representative on the frame roof, framework group. That's my understanding, and maybe Red can, and.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember the discussion, I thought we had thrown the chair in there, but I can't remember if there was gonna be a chair from each county on one of the committees, and then somebody else on the policy committees, but.
I think, well, the way I remember it was they suggested that, but they, they also said that they would, they wanted all the commissions and councils to make those decisions on their own, so it doesn't have to be the chair, it could be.
I'll just also point out that Swiss without Wacom, spell it out. I'll just also point out that Swiss without Waukesha, spell it out, it just doesn't work.
So that's essential for us to remain part of Swiss then. Um, I, I put my name forward as policy, but that's entirely up to the group to decide whether they, whether someone else wants to do it, so.
Mr. Ellenboss? Sorry, Rod, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, and I think beyond that, there was a vacant position as Mrs. Dana Brand Davison.
So I missed that meeting. The Swiss meeting. Um, so bear with me here, but at what point did we ever decide that we were going to be the W in the, in the Swiss? Like, did we ever take a vote on that we're gonna join this group as a group? Or, or, or was it just, uh, I mean, I mean, we give, we give the group credence by being a, a, a member of it. Is it, does it deserve our membership? Did we have that discussion? Is there a resolution or an ordinance that says we're gonna join this group? Or did, or did Rod just go to the meeting and said, I, I want to play?
Well, well, there were several of us in the meeting.
I'm sure there was, I'm just.
And I turned up because you didn't.
No, I wasn't there. You're correct.
Yeah, I'm trying to, we were all invited to these meetings. I think the, the purpose of this going forward is to have a committee and then a smaller committee, if I'm remembering it, to figure out what the structure would actually be and what the ask would be to each counties in terms of how they participate. So I think that would be the point when it come to us is do we want to do it? I think right now, as I'm remembering the discussions we've had, is it's just been kind of very informal, and now there, we're going to contribute a couple people to two different committees that might come back to us with, okay, here's what it might be. And I'll defer to the executive on, on the rest of it.
Mr. Sado.
You're muted, Sap Paul. You can't. Now you're still muted.
Kathy might have to unmute him.
You're correct, no.
Got nothing.
I think with the other council, that's got a mute button for our executive.
I don't know, did my, did my description of it sound like what you remember, if anybody else did?
I, I, I think, yes, I remember it that way. I think that the one committee was going to be called the Framework Committee, and they were basically like an executive committee that would kind of set the guardrails for how this organization would operate. And then the policy people were going to bring back specific issues, um, to, uh, present to the group as options to discuss. That's how I remember it. Council member Ellenboss?
Yeah, I guess, um, I guess, you, sometimes, uh, I colla- I like collaboration, and I like, um, working together where we can to optimize. Um, but at some point, we were elected to represent our county, and do we water that down if we somehow turn into a, a larger regional council? Is that the intent of the way our, our government's set up? I'm not sure. And so I guess I would just like to know what the goals and the, um, the goals and the, and the, um, you know, how we're, how they're, how they plan on getting there and getting funding or whatever to do what they want to do before we kind of decide whether we want to join them, but it sounds like that's what these, that's what these, that's what we're appointing Rod or whoever to do right now. Is that, is that what I'm hearing? But at some point, we will pick a vote on whether we want to be a member of this.
That, that seems to make sense. I, I think all councils will probably need to, there'll have to be some sort of a, an agreement. Uh, but, Mr. Bird, I think you were next.
Yeah, sorry, wrong button. That wasn't the mute button. Uh, the, I, I, I share your same sentiment, Ben, about becoming a, a larger body, and I, I don't want to see that happen, but I also don't want to miss out on the opportunities to collaborate on, on areas that we could save money and become more efficient with, with things that we're doing, such as potentially, um, working together with the, the, uh, juvenile detention center. And so could we find a way to, to come together for that? Another conversation was maybe there should be, or we should talk about doing a regional nine-one-one center and so that we could all share the costs associated with that. So we, we have models similar that we've, we've done in the past, and I think that we've seen some success with those, and it would be good to, to continue to at least look at those, uh, opportunities. I, I do want to be careful. It did feel like there was a lot of ambiguity i- in the conversations on that call, and not a lot of definition, and hopefully the, the committee that council member Brown is joining can, can put some more definition around that that we can all vote on together. But I, I really want to be careful that appointing someone to that committee to vote on things is not a vote for the council as a whole, that any of those decisions come back to the council to vote on, and that, that they're there uh, just to facilitate that conversation essentially, but that the authority still lo- relies with us as a whole, so.
Sounds like you got your sound back, Sap Paul. Go ahead.
Okay, so I just wanted to give you a little background that Ken Dollsted called me, and this is like three, three, more than three months ago. And, uh, eh, and that's when this discussion started. He has been spearheading, and he talked to each individual county executives or commissioners with this idea. And the meeting everybody attended was the very first meeting. And it was ambiguous because, uh, there was no background, and the idea was that if we want to do this, uh, that how should we do it? So this is not a done deal or rules are not made. That's why one of the committee was made was, for the time being, to actually create the bylaws or, or rules or whatever. And, and, uh, what Mr. Bird, Bird has said, that this will vote will not be voted for, for the council. It will be discussed and everybody will take back to their councils. And this is just the initial thought. Of course, there will be development of rules, and I have volunteered to be on the committee, uh, who will be devising these rules, and I'll be sharing from time to time, uh, uh, what, what we will do. So, uh, that's why, uh, uh, this just a start of discussion. And there are several ways, like we discussed within our county, with all the rest of the cities, that there could be some places where we can cooperate. This is just on a bigger way, and one of the bigger thing was to work with the legislature for our region, for economic development money, grants and, and, and state legislature money, uh, to, for different programs that we can swing if we have a group of legislators from these three, four districts, and, and, uh, and, and we talk to them in, in a single voice. So, so that was the starting point. I, I encouraged him that it's a good idea to explore, and that's where we are. It's just first exploration meeting, so more to come.
Mr. Donovan?
Uh, Mr. Bird and Sap Paul, Mr. Sido just sort of summed up some of the things I was going to say, but I'm trying to get back to the discussions we were having. So, yeah, I was trying to figure out like how we can get more legislative clout potentially, what the counties can agree on, instead of committees to do that. And now I'm trying to remember that was there, help me out, people over there, a desire to get somebody representing both the council on one of the committees and the executive on the other committees. Um, and we haven't even, they, they haven't even figured out like what the voting structure, this stuff is going to be. So one committee is going to be figuring that stuff out. But are we looking for two council people or are we looking for one council person and representative from the executive?
We're looking for two council people. And Sap Paul's the second person from Waukesha County that would serve on the framework committee. That's.
Okay, well, then I, then I, as I remember the discussions, I would move to nominate Mr. Buchanan because I thought having a council chair on that, um, would be, would be useful. But I'm not sure if he was keen on that when you brought that up last time.
Second.
I'm fine with the, you're talking about the frame, the framework committee.
Right, with the policy committee that, uh, Mr. Brown was interested in, and then the, um, the other committee, I think there was a hope that each county would have a council chair or commission chair on that.
Okay, so, uh, we've nominated, uh, myself to serve on the framework committee discussion. Mr. Bird?
Um, I'm supportive of that, Dave. I would like to see, eh, right now, I mean, we have the Association of Counties, and I feel like that's, that's been our lobbying arm for a long time, and the organization that we get together in, in committees to, to work together from a lobbying standpoint. I'm less interested in lobbying or joint lobbying, uh, with, with the other counties outside of that. I'm more interested in whether we can work and collaborate on projects and, and create more efficiencies or, or create better services by working together and sharing. I wouldn't, ideally, I think what would be nice is if ideas came forward or individual projects came forward, and then we could go back to the councils individually and say, hey, here's a project. Who wants to serve on, on this project committee to, to work on it? Or, or here's another idea. Is anyone interested from our council on working on this committee as well? So, uh, because there, there are some things that I would be interested, obviously, in working with different organizations with, um, and it might be a way for us to be more effective, divide and conquer essentially.
Other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Todd Donovan?
And I make sure of the motion was, is a dual thing for Mr. Brown on the policy committee and Mr. Buchanan on the other committee that I, oh, yes, I'm.
Is that what you have on the record for the motion?
I didn't know if you had one or two motions.
I have only one.
I think you can do it with one. Todd, you could just.
Yeah, I'm in my motion to have Mr. Brown on the policy committee and Mr. Buchanan on the, what we call that, the framing committee.
Do you need a second again? Second, do you?
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
No.
Red Brown?
Red's frozen.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes, I think he really just fell asleep right there, not moving.
Well, we'll, uh, catch him next time. Okay, uh.
There he is. Valley Berry from that?
I, I think I got a partial yes out of his mouth. He disappeared. Um, okay, anything else on that? We, we, wait a minute, we.
You want to call how that passed? Did count on the pass?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, that passes four zero, no, five zero one. Council member Brown, no, five one one. That passes five one one with council member Red on frozen and council member Kirschner posted.
I want that in a minute. It's with Brown frozen.
The, uh, next item on our agenda is A B two zero two zero dash three six nine. Information only, the county executive currently appoints William Sosbo, city appointment to the Bellingham Waukesha County Housing Authorities Board of Commissioners, pages six twenty-two through six twenty-five. I don't believe this requires a vote.
Um, th- this is oddly worded. It's usually a confirmation. Um, I've never seen one worded like this. This is.
Yeah, I, I would, I would move to confirm. I was wondering why we wouldn't do that.
Carol Frazee?
Yeah, I think there's something in the code that says if we don't act on it within a certain timeframe, then, then, then it just happens, but I do believe we have to confirm this choice.
Yeah, this, this is just, this isn't labeled correctly, so, um, I, I think the motion to confirm is correct.
I move to confirm.
We have a second.
Second.
Uh, Donovan and Bird, okay, any discuss? Mr. Ellenboss?
Was there more than one applicant?
That's a question for Sap Paul.
I, I would believe so, or anybody who knows.
More than applicants for being the members on the committees?
No, we're on to your appointment of, of the Housing Authority Board Commission.
Can you say that again, please?
So we're on item A B two zero two zero dash three six nine. County executive, uh, concurrently appoints William Sosbo, City of Waukesha County Housing Authority.
Okay, okay. No, there were no other candidates.
Any other discussion? Rod just thought out, I think. It came back in another frozen form, which is, I believe, what happened.
Anyone else wondering how our kids are making it with online school?
No, I'm not. Mr. Ellenboss?
Yeah, I, I just want to point out that council member Brown has a wonderful sense of humor, and if you ever want to be entertained, just follow his Facebook page.
Any other discussion on the motion to confirm? Okay, please call a roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
Point of order, what are we voting on? Because.
The red, we lost you so long ago that, that we're a six-person council now.
Right, it's, uh, executive appointment Waukesha County Housing, um, Authorities Board.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yeah.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes, and Red's just throttling his internet to sound cool like Ben.
He can hear it.
That passes unanimously. Now I believe we're on to committee, uh, reports. So, uh, finance, was there anything else in your committee you wanted to report on?
No, no.
Um, Carol, your committee met today?
Yes, we had some time. Finance had a huge day, but, um, Public Works and Health Committee met, and we had a, um, presentation by Ian Deacon and Melora Christensen on the Grace Program. And, uh, Barry, chime in if you want about any, you've been there since the beginning. Um, the Grace Program is the ground-level response and coordinated engagement, and they serve individuals who are, uh, who use the services EMS and things like that the most. And from July, some of the statistics are amazing for this group. From July twenty nineteen to July twenty twenty, um, they served one hundred and seventy-nine individuals. And from pre to post, uh, Grace enrollment, uh, there was a ninety-five percent reduction in jail bookings and an eighty-six, um, percent reduction in EMS contact. So it's, it's a great program that really helps people and gets them healthy and, um, supports, puts support systems in place for those who need it the most, and it just, it's a great model, and I'm hoping it can expand. And Barry, if you wanted to add anything else about it, since you know everything, um, it, it's pretty amazing.
You did a wonderful job. I would have never remembered all those statistics from this earlier today.
I wrote them down.
But no, I don't have anything to add. I, I, I agree with you, though. I hope we can figure out a way to really, uh, so, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel and have new programs that we can utilize the Grace Program. Have new programs that we can utilize the Grace Program, uh, much more. So, uh, it was a great presentation.
Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, planning and development, Ben?
Hopefully my internet will hold on long enough here. Um, we discussed AB twenty twenty dash three five zero. A discussion with planning and development staff on code amendments to Waukesha County Code Titles twelve, sixteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. And, um, close presentation kind of mentioned it was a code scrub, but it was more than a code scrub. Anyway, I would request in the future that when we have that much. EDS stuff to go over, that we have more than one hour to do it. Um, but I think it'll be coming to the rest of the council soon.
And, uh, the last committee meeting of the day was our, uh, committee as a whole, uh, where we discussed Cherry Point Amendments. Uh, number of questions came up. We decided that, uh, actually two specific questions came up that we wanted to have our. The group of environmental and industry folks that came up with the compromise that the planning commission passed. And we wanted them to take a look at that. Uh, but we came to the realization at the end that there may be some more stuff. So rather than send that over piecemeal, uh, we decided to schedule another work session and, uh, come up with that. The full list of issues and questions that we want resolved. So, um, we basically ran out of time. And, uh, we'll pick it up in two weeks. That's it for committees. Is there any, uh, other business to, for the council? Mr. Bird.
Yeah, while we were on break, you, the, uh, I saw an, an image that. Of a, an event here where there, there were some children hitting a, uh. A pinata decorated as a, as a pig in a officer's uniform. And I will speak for myself, but I hope that some of the other council members here will join me in saying that, that it's really. The wrong example that we wanted to set for our children and, and for our community. And while we have a lot of differences in opinion and what we would like to see as, as outcomes. It doesn't hurt, help our cause to debilify everyone in a category. Whether it's based on demographics or genders or sexual orientation or their job. That pays, that, that they work hard at and that they're proud of. Hey, I understand that every, every organization regardless has bad. Has people that don't do their job well, that, that maybe we're upset with. And that doesn't mean that everyone in that organization does. And, and while there might be some changes needed, we can't get there if, if this is. This is the way that we're going to approach it. And we definitely can't get there if we're going to raise an entire generation of children to, to. Try to approach solving their problems in the same way. And so I, I hope that we could find a better way to move forward together. It, it's more important than ever.
Mr. Donovan.
I was on to council member updates, is that right?
Sure. Any other, any other, uh, items of business also? But yes, council member update.
I guess we're good. Um, two quick things and then, um, the. On that Waukesha Transit Authority Board and it's really interesting, they're, they're able to use their cares dollars to just backfill revenue. And they're going to come out of twenty twenty in better financial shape than Sapul's been on these meetings with. It's, it's just oddly stunning, with better, bigger fund balances than, than they started. But the, the thing I wanted to mention, there, then this kind of came up in, in public comment. The Lemay ferries in Dry Dock and there's some concern on the island about folks. Having to be on a smaller vessel. And then, as you heard in the call today, the van and the skipper, Rich Hudson. Um, the, the chief, um, operator of, of vessels is assured the community. And, and the Lemuelian Ferry Advisory Committee that they've, they've fitted that vessel out with partitions between seating. And masks being enforced and giving the skippers the ability to like not pe- bring people on, on board. But I don't know about the van thing, so I'll hopefully can get back to, um, the woman who was, who's calling us about that. But I wanted to just bring up the, the ferry issue. Like to kind of do this every few meetings. Depending on how a build grant goes, a federal grant application, um, that, that boat needs to be rebuilt. I don't want to sound like a broken record here. Though we're kind of holding our breath about how that grant application will go, because if you remember from months ago, even pre-COVID. The committee came asking for potential tax for us to pass a ferry district tax. Um, which is a pretty big ask then and even bigger now. So, um, hopefully we'll be able to get Public Works to keep you posted on. How that grant application's going. Just want to keep reminding people, there's like a twenty-six million dollar ask out there coming someday.
Any other council member updates, Ben?
I just kind of want to keep it in the forefront of our minds. So when Intalcow left, what was that? Seven hundred plus jobs, direct jobs, and then how many indirect? And now I'm seeing in the Seattle Times that, uh, aerospace supplier Safran. Closing Washington plants for two weeks. So I'm hearing that that's another four hundred and seventy-five jobs in Bellingham. So what's that? Twelve hundred? Family wage or close to family wage jobs. And hopefully it's only for two weeks, but. We might start feeling that.
Other council member updates? Ca- uh, Councilmember Kerschner.
Yeah, I just want to, um, follow on with what Ben just reported and let you guys know that Urschig's. A longtime manufacturing business in Waukesha County down on the waterfront, kind of. Uh, is closing its business here. About thirty high-paid professional jobs. And I wanted to also thank Tyler for his comments about, um, respecting people's differences. And working to find solutions that don't involve violence. I appreciate that, Tyler. I'm on board with that a hundred percent. And, um, it's good to see all of your happy faces here again. Looking forward to getting back into it.
Mr. Ellenboss.
Yeah, I, I, I meant to mention, men- mention Urschig's too, and I just want to add some context there that. Um, they had some work that they were going to do at, at the Cherry Point Facility. And instead of having local people do it, now they're having to bring them in from Louisiana or something like that. So. That's not ideal in my opinion. Um, and, and I appreciate Tyler's comments. And I think that it's worth noting that our, our good sheriff released a, a fairly. Fairly good statement, I thought, on his social media account pertaining to the exact same thing that I support as well.
Anything else? Any, Mr. Brown?
Um, thank you, Ben, for your kind comments about my political postings on Facebook. Or you may talk about the cartoons.
It's not all political, Rod.
No, I know, but, but I.
A little bit of politics.
I have, I have done my best over COVID to try and find something to make people laugh. So, um, the, the crosses both sides of political law. The, uh, you know, I'm supportive. I, I just want to acknowledge what Mr. Bird said too. You, you may have seen a post that I put up, which was taken from something that Ann Deacon had provided us quite some time ago. About a list of all the, um, alternative programs that we make. And one of my frustrations about the call. To, uh, reduce the police funding is I've yet to talk to anybody who's actually read what the budget currently is. And that's one of my frustrations is, um, they're just saying, cut the budget, but they're not actually reading the budget. And, um, anyway, that's just what it's like being government, I guess.
Councilmember Ellenboss.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Brown. I saw that post as well and I thought it was wonderful and I directed quite a few people to it for reference. I really appreciated compo- your. Compilation and getting it out there. I think it's very, um, pertinent to the conversation that, that we're having.
One of which was the Grace Program, which wouldn't operate unless it had the police corporation in participation, so.
Councilmember Frazee.
Yeah, and I just want people to be, know that we do know that a lot of people are hurting now and losing jobs. And even I heard a lot, from a lot of parents this, this week or last week about, you know, starting school and it's so different. And that, you know, there's teachers in tears because they need to learn a lot. So we know that everyone, a lot of people in the county are hurting and, and then we have things like you said, the pinata. And the more we can, I know I always use the word kumbaya, but the more we can work together and at least be respectful. I think we can be an example as we move forward. And I think that's going to be really important now, especially with elections coming up. Yeah, just being respectful and, and the public knowing that we do know there's a lot of, you know. I know my neighbor has to, two of them need to write, drive to Everett now for their jobs five days a week. And there's a, that's just people around me. And then I hear from a lot of people, so it's just like you, losing their job or having to go further. And, you know, anything we can do to reduce that anxiety. And, um, yeah, just working together in a nice, calm way would be helpful, I think, for our community.
Any, any last thoughts? Well, everybody, it is great to be back. It's great to see you all. Uh, don't have to look through the smoke today. It's a little bit better. I actually saw the sky. So, uh, that was at lunchtime, but, um, anyway, uh, again, good to see you and we will meet again in two weeks. We are adjourned.